All right, before we hit the gavel, just want to make sure that we have trustee Nicolette also on the line.
I am on the line, but I cannot see you. Thanks for asking.
Okay, you can't see us?
Correct.
Can you see the materials that are up?
Now I see you. Someone did magic. Thank you.
JJ, JJ did the magic. Always.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, everybody. It is 2:08 PM on this Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, and I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, can you please do roll call?
Thank you, ma'am president. Trustee Christine Hall.
Present.
Vice President Adam Mayberry. Trustee Dr. Nicolette.
Good afternoon.
Trustee JJ Phoenix.
Present.
President Beth Smith. Trustee Carleen Westlake. Clerk Woodley, and student Annie Latavia. All present accounted for.
Fantastic. All right, so earlier today, we had a special meeting for our budget, and now we are in our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. He's not exactly a new face, but we would like to welcome trustee JJ Phoenix. Would you please lead us in the pledge?
States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone. That closes item 1.03, and we'll move on now to our land acknowledgement, 1.04. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washoe, Washu, Nu'umu, Northern Paiute, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Nuhwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. And so that closes item 1.04, and we will move on now to a very lovely item that I am so pleased that we get to have today. Item 1.05, the ceremonial swearing-in of our new school police officer. And so we welcome school police chief Tracy Moore to conduct the ceremonial swearing-in for Officer Justin Lamar. And then following the swearing-in, we will all get up and join you in a photo.
Perfect. President Smith, trustees, superintendent, Chief Moore, school police. Sorry, I was stepping outside there. I didn't, I was like, whoa, I heard you guys say a ceremony, so it's a full house today. I'd like to go ahead and introduce to you our newest hire. He started on the 8th, and thank you for allowing us to come up in front of you and introduce Justin Lamar. Let me give you a little bit of history on Officer Lamar. He's new to Reno area. He came from my old stopping grounds from the Santa Clara, East Bayside there. He was raised in law enforcement and where his father was with the California Highway Patrol. This opened a door for him to become an explorer with the California Highway Patrol Explorer Program. As an explorer, he was awarded Explorer of the Year. Officer Lamar has always had an interest in law enforcement because of his father and other family members who served. His family left California, and so he wanted to make a change. He moved to northern Nevada and applied to be an officer with the Sparks Police Department. So Chief Crawford, no hard feelings. Thank you for letting us take a lateral from your agency, so we greatly appreciate that. Let's see, one of the huge reasons he's glad he moved to Nevada is because all the outdoor activities in his free time, he enjoys going fishing, going on backpack trips, and to explore our numerous accounts of ghost towns in Nevada. Officer Lamar has a history, well, sorry, I'll put this way, he wrote it. Officer Lamar is a history of, sorry, how'd you write this? Officer Lamar is a history nerd, especially when it comes to old wild west mining history. So being able to have all those ghost towns to explore is something that he loves. Sorry, I couldn't spit that out right, yeah? So with that said, we're going to go ahead with the official swearing. I have to have your badge. And then he has talked about a small world. I walked in room, was like, oh yeah, Brienne, she worked at the airport, my former employer, as a dispatcher. So she's up here, they're in a dating relationship, and he has asked that she pin the badge onto him if I got to swear in first, okay? But you guys stay up here, Bree. Hey, Bree, you guys stay up here for me, though. I got an important job for you. Go hold that for me. All right, so I'm going to have you just hold up your right hand, and you'll repeat after me. I, your first and last name.
I, Justin Lamar.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That will support, protect, and defend.
That will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the regulations of the Washoe County School District.
And the regulations of the Washoe County School District.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
Of any state notwithstanding.
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
All duties of school police officer.
All duties of school police officer.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Avery, I told you could do this.
I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity. I think it's going to be great working with the next generation, the future. So I want to thank chief and the board again for this opportunity to work for you guys, so thank you.
All right, and I think we're going to get up now and take a photo with you. All right, and I think we're gonna get up now and take a photo with you. All right, well, congratulations, Officer Lamar. We're so happy to have you. So that closes item 1.05 and section 1 in its entirety, and brings us on now to section 2, our consent agenda items. So today for our consent agenda items, we have items 2.02 to 2.14. And so I have not received prior notice of anyone pulling any of these items. I'm looking around. I don't see any lights on. I also don't see Dr. Nicolette's light. Um, so if no one has any general comments, we'll go to general public comment on any of these items, 2.02 to 2.14. JJ?
I have no cards.
Heck, okay. All right, team. All right, so unless there is any discussion or consideration for any of these items, I am looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items, 2.02 to 2.14.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approve consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.14.
A second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Phoenix, and we have a second by clerk Woodley. I see no lights on for discussion on the motion. Also looking at Dr. Nicolette, all right? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. And we will move on now to section 3. These are our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And we start today with item 3.01. This is a presentation of a Washoe County School District proclamation honoring Black History Month in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for presentation and discussion only, and we have many wonderful guests with us today, starting with our Director of Professional Growth Systems, Dr. Katie Louise Weir.
Thanks, JJ. There we go. Okay. Good afternoon, trustees, colleagues, and to all of our invited guests this afternoon. Um, like President Smith said, I'm Katie Louise Weir, Director of Professional Growth Systems within Human Resources, and it is a tremendous privilege to be able to join you today as we recognize Black History Month, an opportunity to reflect, honor, and engage with the profound contributions and experiences of Black Americans throughout history. This year, we center our focus on African-American labor, on the ways in which, in all its forms, it is shaped and intersected with the Black experience. Work has not just been about survival. It's been about dignity, about building communities, and about forging new opportunities where none seem to exist. Whether in vocational trades, professional fields, the arts, education, or voluntary service, Black labor has been central to shaping the America we know today. As we reflect on this legacy, it's my great honor to introduce the voices that will carry our reflections forward, our Black Student Union representatives from schools here in Washoe County School District. These students embody the spirit of progress, resilience, and excellence, and their voices remind us that the work continues, not just in remembering history, but in shaping the future. Today, we have Nala Mikkel from North Valleys High School and Eric Burns from McQueen High School. Please join me in welcoming Nala and Eric to share their insights and reflections.
Welcome, Nala. Welcome, Eric.
Hi. Um, hello. My name is Nala Mikkel, and I am a junior, and I attend North Valleys High School with above a 4.0 weighted GPA, the vice president of my Black Student Union, and a multi-sport athlete. Um, growing up Black, I was given limits by my peers or my teachers. However, I was also put into the gifted and talented program at such a young age, and it gave me the ability to exercise my gifts that were otherwise neglected. I was taught I could be a drone, but I could never, ever be in a position of power, which engraved in my mindset that I could never be anything less than excellent if I wanted the same privileges as my counterparts. When I was 14, I decided I want to be a teacher. Although my career choice falters in the eyes of many, it has been extremely important to dedicate my life to servicing my community. It excited me to know that I would be shaping the minds of the youth that would continue to make significant contributions to the community that I hold dear to my heart after my influence has diminished. I made this life decision after meeting my freshman honors English teacher, Danielle Luna, um, a Black woman who stood for a demographic of people that has always been forced to assimilate. It has been two years since then, and I've still seen the positive influence she has continued to make on the students that came after me in the space for education, not just schooling, she provides. She gave me that safe space to express my feelings of grief, um, meeting her just a few short months after I lost my older brother to police brutality, um, which significantly affected my view on how much loving people and learning from them are essential in building healthy relationships inside the classroom or otherwise. Um, this first comes by accepting and acknowledging cultural differences and how that may be portrayed across the classroom. The talkative Black child is seen as rambunctious, but the talkative white child needs a diagnosis. The stigma and race typing that happens inside the classroom is usually mindless, but that is the issue. Some teachers do not even begin to understand the weight of their voice in the way that reflects into some students' self-image. Um, this shows that we must be able to nurture cultural diversity in and outside of the classroom through extracurriculars by continuing to develop spaces for all communities to find a sense of identity, while also allowing students to have the opportunity to expand their knowledge on how to be culturally sensitive and how all types of people are connected. Allowing these spaces and cultural connections are about how many Black leaders were able to influence more equal access and opportunity, not only for their community, but permitted those of other minority groups to advocate for rights that were much deserved. By expanding and not censoring these issues due to the political climate, it allows for a more cohesive environment that is inclusive to all identities because mine and many other identities are not controversial or something too authentic outside of the illusion that has been established by the time. It must start with implementing and promoting diversity within our curriculum, not necessarily the same redundant figures. Why must we be subjugated to an experience that has been continued to undermine our abilities and restrict our understanding of who we are? We cannot learn things we didn't know, we did not know, if it is prohibited, to learn of those who came before and what was the result of the past actions. We cannot wait for the change to come, but instead be the change, becoming a school district that values being human, getting rid of the promotion of ignorance. This principle is upheld by educating, understanding, and most importantly, loving and nurturing the truth that lives within our youth. Thank you for your time and this opportunity to allow me to see this commitment you have to uplifting the students of students within our school system.
Thank you, Nala.
Hello, my name is Eric Burns. I am currently a senior at McQueen and one of the current members of the BSU as a historian. I am proud to be up here today with you and speak about how much this club can do and what it had, or I'm sorry, and how it has impacted me as an African-American student. This club helps students of African descent to find out more about themselves, to help them feel more accepted or understood. That is why I so eagerly joined. Growing up with a white dad and a Black mother, I was not sure whether or not I was even able to join something like this. But with personal experiences and many life lessons, I realized that sometimes it's not about the color of your skin, but what you represent. I represented a mixed child to some, a Black child to another, and a not Black enough child to the rest. But I learned that no matter how Black I was in someone else's eyes, I was still born with brown skin, extremely thick hair, and a life where I will occasionally receive the ignorant comments of a nonsensical person. Altogether, these factors led me to have a weird outlook on my life. But with the BSU's help, I feel like I can finally engage with my culture and heritage in a way that I can appreciate and understand better, and also share this positive outlook with my peers. In the BSU, we take time to learn out, we take time out to learn new topics about Black history and what we can and have accomplished. We are an all-hands-on, very student-oriented club where we build our own community. Not only do students of color attend, but also many other students who may be white, Hispanic, or of any other ethnicity. We are all accepting to anyone who wants to learn about and engage in the African-American culture. Around 10 years ago, or so I am told, McQueen High School had a BSU club that was constructed to create a community and safe space for students of color to attend, to embrace and to be a part of in their own important way. Now, in present day, we have decided to again start a BSU club, this time with the intentions of remaining for a while in the futures to come. Overall, the BSU engages with students in many ways by appreciating Black culture through research projects that will be hanging around the school or library. Uh, we do potluck days where we will try to be bringing in different cultural foods to just help diversify and help learn about, like, popular Black cuisine. And we're also doing so much other stuff. The most important way we engage with our members is by building a strong community within ourselves and meeting every Friday to get to know each other and discover things about ourselves and others that we may not have known that can help us to embrace who we are as people of color. This Black History Month, every day a new post will be shared on the BSU school-approved Instagram about a new fact of African-American history in Nevada and all around. We will also have other events planned, such as Board Game Days, more potlucks, and just other projects, and we're doing this to come celebrate the lives and accomplishments of our Black inspirations. On an ending note, while we are still working on engaging with more students, we thank all those who continue to join and have been with us since the beginning, and we thank all of you admin and board leaders that show your support by allowing us to become an operating club once again. Thank you.
All right, Eric and Nala, a few things while you're up there. There are some very important guests here. We have the principals from both of your high schools. We have Tomas Macaluso. Would you mind just standing up briefly so everyone can see? And then also Freeman Holbrook from McQueen High School. Thank you for being here to support your students. And Nala, am I right that your teacher that you were talking about is here? Can you also give us a wave? When we take photos, you're gonna be in them. I'm just telling you right now. Um, and so if you don't mind, I'd like to talk a little bit about both of you, and even how this actually came about. Because I did not know Nala, and other members of our board maybe did not know Nala, until we saw her get an award on Martin Luther King Day at the event held for the Northern Nevada Black Cultural Awareness Society, and you received that award. Superintendent Ernst was there. Many of our trustees were there. I was very moved by what you said. And so when we were talking about what we would put together for this event, I said we would love to have Nala here, and then also other peers that are doing this work in this space. And so I don't know if anyone from the Black, the Northern Nevada Black Cultural Awareness Society is here, but if you're listening, um, thank you so much for that opportunity to have that event and to also be exposed to the powerful work of our students. And Eric, that was incredible. I really appreciate what you shared, and I want to drill in on something you said, because I think everybody needs to hear this. You said, "Everyone is welcome to come join your student union." Yes, you did. I know you're going off script, but for a minute, can you share why that is so important, that everyone is welcome to join?
Um, it's important mainly just because it's, the club isn't about, like, just getting students of color, Black students, to just come and hang out, maybe share a few stories. It's to grow a stronger Black community on campus, to help maybe bring more, um, I'm sorry, to bring more, like, acknowledgement to the students of color on campus and what we can do, how we can, you know, be present and active in our school. We just want to share that with everyone.
I love that, and you're exactly right. Because, you know, people may wonder, you know, why we do months of acknowledgement and recognition, and it is so important to emphasize to everyone that these months are for everyone's benefit. Because we all benefit when we learn these histories, not just the facts that we're taught, but the stories behind them, the context and the moments that are maybe not carried forward as well or deserve a different spotlight. And we all benefit from knowledge and learning and the way that we advance as a people through that information and through that sharing of information. And that's why it is so important that we also expose ourselves and learn from a curious standpoint, a supportive standpoint. And so thank you so much for mentioning that everyone is welcome in the group that you're a part of. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I don't know if any other trustees want to make any comments to our colleagues. I see trustee Phoenix?
I do want, uh, first and foremost, thank you for having the courage, you know, to have that voice, a voice for yourself, a voice for the students, and the leadership and the support that comes with that, as sexy example for all students here in Washoe County. And from me to you and from all of us, thank you very much for having that courage in doing so. So thank you.
All right, and on that note, reading our proclamation today on behalf of Superintendent Ernst, is clerk Woodley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very proud to read this proclamation, and I made sure I wore the right colors for today. So thank you very much for coming, everyone. Whereas Black History Month is a time to recognize and honor the invaluable contributions and profound impact of Black individuals throughout history, across all fields of endeavor in our nation and around the world. Whereas the resilience, strength, and determination of Black people in the face of adversity have shaped our society and continue to inspire future generations in the pursuit of justice, equality, and opportunity for all. Whereas the achievements of Black leaders, thinkers, artists, activists, educators, scientists, and everyday individuals who have worked tirelessly to challenge and overcome systems of oppression, merit celebration, and remembrance. Whereas the celebration of Black History Month provides an opportunity to reflect on the progress made in advancing civil rights while also acknowledging the ongoing struggles for equity and justice that persist in all communities. Whereas Black individuals continue to make significant contributions in all areas of society today, including education, science, technology, business, the arts, public service, and social activism, shaping the present and future of our world. Whereas this month serves as a reminder not only to recognize the historical significance of Black individuals, but also to celebrate their ongoing efforts alongside others in creating a more inclusive, compassionate, and just world. Now, therefore, on behalf of Joe Ernst, Superintendent of the Washoe County School District, I do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month. Let us honor the legacy of Black Americans by learning from their stories, celebrating both historical and present-day accomplishments, and committing ourselves to the continued work of advancing equity, inclusion, and justice for all. Let this month be a time of reflection, education, and celebration as we recognize the past, present, and future contributions of Black individuals, as well as the collective efforts of diverse communities working together to build a better world.
Thank you, clerk Woodley. All right, and now we'd love to come up and take a photo with you, your principals, your teachers, everyone that's here to celebrate. All right, we're gonna just have our guests leave. I can already tell by the empty chairs what the popular items were from today. Uh, and then once everybody hails out, I would love for everybody to chat out front. Maybe we could shut the doors just so that um our folks out in the lobby are able to enjoy their moments of celebration with our impressive students and staff. All right, everyone, thank you so much. That closes item 3.01 and moves on now to item 3.02. This is the presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve the 2024-2025 D Major Projects Program for construction phase funding for the Edward C. Reed High School Modernization Project and design phase funding for a new elementary school on the existing Edward L. Pine Middle School campus for a total amount of $99,500,000 as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. This is an item for possible action. And we have today, I always love this because I read the big, long agendas and then I look up and then I see we have our Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman, to walk us through this item.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you for having me today to bring forward the presentation and the recommendation from the Capital Funding Protection Committee. Um, we're really excited. These are our next phases of our facility modernization plan and really ready to kick them off. So, we'll start up with the elementary school that is proposed on the Pine campus. It was proposed as an idea of a pre-K8 in the facility modernization plan that was approved in December of 2023. In January of 2024, we re-engaged with Canon Design to do a pre-K8 study, not knowing if we were going to put just an elementary school on that campus or adding a K or a six-through-eight side to that as well. And so you guys saw that just last meeting, the pre-K8 study was approved. And it was approved as an elementary school for, with a master plan for a six-through-eight on that campus. Um, and with the inclusion of Smith Ridge and Dodson into that elementary school. So, the design phase that we're starting to talk about here, we're, we're really trying to line up the opening of Vaughan and the temporary closure of Pine because we don't want that campus to be vacant. Um, we want to do something on there so that we can get that ball rolling and create those academic environments for those students that they deserve. So, we're took, we're gonna start with an assessment of the existing building to talk about the structure, to see if that steel structure, which is what we're thinking, could remain, would remain, and we could start from there. So, we could hit the ground running a little quicker. It's situated the right way, it has access um into the property and parking and that, that we could improve upon, obviously, but want to see if that will work first and it might save us some time. We know that the roof and the HVAC systems have outlived their useful life. So, we intended to replace those all along. So, we'll tear it off, it'll look very much like Vaughan does today with just the steel structure. If that works. So, we've got Ben to move on to conceptual design. Um, we need that so that we can master plan it and then engage a C Mar, a construction manager at risk to help us through that design process. We want to give them a little meat, uh, if you will, to actually propose upon and get some ideas because that is where we see the creativity come through. And then we'll work on the full design phase activities. You can see on here, there's a, a site that Canon Design showed with some options. Those are just options, we'll get down to the nitty-gritty in the design phase. Here are the design phase estimates. They are estimates because we don't know what, are we going to keep what portion of that steel structure or not? And we've got to do some investigation with that. You can see the concept design up there for $2 million to start, but these are just estimates at this point. We're asking for $12 million, knowing that that estimate is about 9.7 for all of those things. But if there are savings, that gets rolled into construction. So, we, we will work really hard to save as much as we can out of that. Um, but there's a lot of design work to be done with that. So, the schedule that we're looking at, we're look at hitting the ground in February to look at the building and site assessment and the conceptual design, complete that in June, and then put out a solicitation for that construction manager at risk, and then start that design process from July 2025 to July 2026. With summer of 2026, we'll be bidding that through the C Mar and then starting some phase of construction in fall of 2026 after we empty that building up. So, that completes the, the elementary school. Now, we're asking for some construction phase funding for the Edward C. Reed Modernization, which you guys have seen an update on, um, but we'll go through it a little bit with just the history. We started in February, you guys approved design funding for that project, and we started designing that with collaborative design. We worked through the ed specs and what the modernization said and came up with prioritizations and priorities. There are the top three from our, our leadership, those are non-negotiables. But then we worked with the school and the school community and student voice to see what they would like in that remaining dollar amount that fits into those ed specs as well as their needs. So, that, we're looking at some athletic improvements, remodeled some restrooms um for them. There's a, a band addition, there's a lot of other items that'll be on there with the media center improved um throughout the school. So, I'll get to kind of some of those phasing plans in the next slide here. But June of 2024, we retained our C Mar, who's been a great partner with us and going through that process. This is going to be a really logistical project where we're gonna have to move students around and that. Um, and they're, they've been great to work with and they will make great communication with our school site to help them mitigate any of those issues. So, December 2024, we did come to you guys with a GMP1, a Guaranteed Maximum Price Number One for the switchgear because it's made specifically for that building and it's an early procurement item. So, we did that and you guys approved that and we continued on with the design. We did provide some updates to the capital funding as well as the board in October and December. So, you kind of knew what we were looking at and what we were designing um and was, we were able to answer some questions at that time. So, we did meet, like I said, with student voice. We had a great community meeting at Reed High School. We had a lot of the, the board of trustees and a lot of electeds there um and felt like we had a lot of parents there asking some great questions and we were able to answer those with the assistance of the principal, which was really, really a good community outreach for us. We worked with the City of Sparks, um, we had some landscaping challenges. It's hard to put a lot of trees on a, on a playfield when you have baseball and football on there, but we worked through that with them and they were a great partner with us. Um, they had some pre-meetings that we were able to attend, so we got down to a decision pretty quickly with them. Here is the project scope. It hasn't changed from our update in October. You know, we're, we're increasing it about 70,000 square feet, bringing all those students in from the mobiles. As I said, we're doing abandoned orchestra additions, some athletic additions, putting in some student hubs um and some items in the courtyard with the shade structure. We are increasing that um si- single-point entry and safety and security with cameras and that. We are going to be able to identify the front of that building. So, it's kind of brown now, it's gonna have some color to it, which will pop out of there with some of their logos, which I think will be really cool. Here's the landscape plan we worked with um the City of Sparks on, the phasing plan. We're really gonna be doing the classroom additions, some of those athletic additions and the band addition first. Then we kind of transfer out to the outbuildings um so that we can get all the students under one space first, and then we can work outside. It's kind of their logistical plan. So, we plan on completing everything in fall of 2027. Um, but we're trying to get the students into the building in fall of 2026. So, this is their prominent entrance, which I think looks really cool with their Reed Raider logo on it. Some more items in there that you can look through. We're increasing some of this accessway from the football field to the PE addition with some lighting for safety. There's the shade structure. And here is our three, these are our three buckets. Our construction bucket, our professional services, which we need inspectors and permit fees and, and all those things. And then the furnishings fixtures and equipment that we'll be putting into those new spaces. Construction fee breakdown, this is plenums breakdown because they are a construction manager at risk. They are able to break things down for us and we get to see those items, which is one of the great benefits of a C Mar. We do have some alternates on there. Um, we are looking at, as you can see on there, we have a two, two-and-a-half percent contingency for the contractor and we have 5% for us. With the economy and, and things that are going on right now, we think the 5% is a really good way for us to make sure we can do everything that we want to do in there and need to do. We are, we actually have an allowance for alternates and you can see those alternates below. And we're really prioritizing alternates one, two, and four as items that we'd really like to do within that alternate budget. But we put them in there so that we can award a project when we get down to this. Professional services breakdown, that just tells you how we spend all of that, whether it's commissioning, in-house staff. Those get charged to the budget, the project budget, hazardous material oversight. Um, this is the breakdown for your furnishings fixtures and equipment so that you know where we're planning on spending that and we have contingency for that as well. So, we're intending to put this out to bid with our C Mar in March of 2025. Construction will begin in June of 2025 pending board approval. And then we're anticipating completion in fall of 2027. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have. But we have, I think we have one more attachment with the, the tally of all of that. But we're asking for $99.5 million today to do those improvements and get that design started.
All right, looking to see if we have any clarifications before we have further discussion and then public comment. Trustee Hall.
I do have a question. So, for the furniture budget, that's for, only for the new classrooms? So, will uh existing classrooms, will they have, will there be an opportunity for new furniture in those classrooms?
So, currently, they have the standard furniture in those existing classrooms. They may be older and we can look at those, moving things around as we move stuff out from the mobiles. But those, that is the furniture for just the new classroom spaces and the new spaces.
Okay.
All right, Vice President Mayberry.
Yeah, um, just really a comment, thank you. Uh, you, all the interior, exterior improvements really, I think are, are meeting the feedback that I've been hearing for the last couple of years. So, I think myself, Reed High School is in at-large District F, District B. Uh, we've gotten a lot of feedback. We attended the uh, the workshop that you had a few months ago. Feels like a few months ago, maybe it was a few weeks ago. But thank you for your effort. I'm happy to make a motion if you, if I can do that.
Um, well, we still have to do public comment and then um whatever conversation comes out from that. Uh, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
All right, um, Dr. Nicolette, just want to make sure that you're invited into this conversation.
I'm good, thank you very much. I think uh, it's high.
We'll, we'll wait, we'll make sure we get her back online.
Um, okay, well, while we're waiting for that, do you mind, or, oh, wait, maybe she's back. Okay, I'll wait. Maybe not.
Dr. Nicolette? Okay, well, we'll try to get a stable connection with Dr. Nicolette and we'll make sure to invite her back into the process when we have her back.
That's what I'm saying, can you even hear me? Okay.
All right, uh, Trustee Hall.
Okay, um, if, if we could go back to the conversation about the, the reconstruction at Pine, um, I just, I just want to make sure, again, we're, we're being really, really clear about the process. Um, so, I know that the, it's been mentioned that Smith Ridge and Dodson are the most likely schools, but I just want to make sure that we're all having this conversation in a public forum that no zoning decisions have been made yet. So, while notifications have been sent home and that was part of the FMP, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page because Dodson's in my area and I have gotten some calls about that and I know there were some concerns. So, I just want to, I just want to put that out there, that no, no zoning decisions have been made. Um, but the other thing, and I brought this up last time, and I, I think it's worth having a conversation. I know this isn't entirely about the capital funding, but it's about the process in which we're gonna go through with this. This is a different process. We're, we're merging potentially several schools here, at least two, into a whole new building. It's different than rebuilding Vaughan, it's different than rebuilding O'Brien, it's different than building a brand-new school like Poliquitas or Sky Ranch. We're potentially merging several schools, so that process is gonna look a little different. And I just, I just want to signal that to our community that you all are working really, really hard to make sure that that process is as transparent and as open as possible. Um, and I know there's been, you know, a, a lot of conversation about that and I just want to applaud your team for making sure that the community is aware and informed and has been able to be a part of this process. And I'd like to, I just, I just hope that we can continue to see that happening, including zoning, getting involved, you know, potentially looking at those communities getting to be a part of the design process and any feedback that they might have. Um, and I threw this out here last time, but even getting the naming committee involved because this is a whole brand-new thing. So, I just, I just want to throw that out there because I think it's really important that we ensure that the whole community gets to be a part of this. And it's really exciting, it's so cool. Um, I think we've all driven by Pine and wondered like, you know, what's up with that building, right? So, it's really exciting to think about something new and to have the community buy-in for it. So, um, I just want to applaud your, your team on that. Thank you very much.
And, and I'll jump in. I asked this question for the advanced questions as well too, and, and I admit I still thinking about how this all comes together. So, I'm obviously very familiar with the historical zoning practices, having been a former chair of the Zoning Advisory Committee. Trustee Hall is the most recent chair of the Zoning Advisory Committee. But going specifically, this item is around the design phase funding. This is a unique, this is a unique scenario. We're in a different phase of the WC1 monies and the FMP. So, can we talk a little bit about how the design phase is successful without having actually determined what families are gonna go here? And it's fundamentally different for me from when we were building schools, when we were in overcrowding situations because we roughly knew the children we had enrolled in those schools. But I admit, I still have questions about how design phase can be as successful without knowing, I, the board hasn't, you know, contemplated exactly which communities. We have a very good idea, we have the FMP, I support the FMP. But I view this phase as being a bit different than when we were building schools for overcrowding or perhaps rebuilding like in the case of, of O'Brien.
So, it goes back to our fundamentals of our educational specifications and the ideas about that. That is a recipe and that allows, those, that recipe is flexible. It allows for things in there um in spaces that can be converted to other things. Just because we have a PTA at one school doesn't mean we can't use it as a community in schools at another, at another site and his needs, right? And we, we intend to have community meetings about this and cast our net wide to invite them to these so they can come similar to like what we had at Reed. We're doing that now with even Echo Loader and Matthews because we don't know what that's going to be. So, if we cast our net wide to invite them to those community meetings, we'll gain their input as well as meeting with the principals of those schools that we think may be coming into that and see what their needs could be, right? It's, it's not a one-size-fits-all for anything that we've been doing. And so, we are able to be flexible with those spaces and the ideas. But we have a good recipe, we think, with the ed specs that we've been doing at all of the other sites as well, that we think we can move some things in and out and needs, even at Proctor Hug. We had the needs for additional special education classrooms and we changed some of those small group rooms into special education classrooms because it allowed for that space. So, we have flexibility and we look at that all the time.
Thank you very much for that. All right, um, all right, Dr. Nicolette, do we have you back? Dr. Nicolette, I just wanted to make sure to give you an opportunity.
I've been here, I just don't know if you can hear me or see me.
Yes, we can definitely see. Yes, we can definitely see you, but we can hear you now.
Wonderful, and I will say that you started a question and then you cut out. So could you repeat the question, please?
I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to be heard on the item if you had anything to share.
Oh, well, thank you. You know.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we're having a bandwidth issue with the video. Okay, well, I certainly don't want to necessarily delay any of the work with this. So I'll bring it back here to the board. We've done public comment, we've had discussions. So if it's the pleasure of the board, we can move forward with some action.
I move the board trustees approve funding in the amount of 99.5 million for 2024-25D major projects program.
It's been a road and it will continue to be a road and we're very lucky, in, in your words, President. WC1 has been a very long time gift that we will continue to, to reap the benefits for our students, our families and our community.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Nicolet. Vice President Mayberry.
I'll, I'll start that over. I move that the board of trustees approves funding in the amount of 99.5 million for the 2024-25D major projects program for the construction phase funding for the Edward C. Reed High School modernization project and the design phase funding for a new elementary school on the existing Edward L. Pine Middle School campus as recommended by the capital funding protection committee. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry. We have a second by Clerk Woodley. Seeing no lights on or hands up for discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. And now we'll move on to item 3.03. This is the discussion and possible action to adopt Washoe County School District Board Resolution 25-004, a resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $100 million in general obligation limited tax school improvement bonds, additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2025A, and authorizing officers of the district to take other actions necessary to complete the issuance and related matters. This is an item for possible action and as I look up, I see our chief financial officer, Mark Mathers.
Great, thank you very much. So with your approval of the prior board item, we now are presenting to you a bond resolution to sell $100 million even of WC1 bonds. These are bonds that are pledged by the WC1 sales tax monies that we've received. We go with 100 million because it's, A, a nice round number and investors look for a superior liquidity of larger series of bonds like 100 million dollars. So hence, hence that dollar amount there. Again, we have strong cover, as the staff report explains, we have strong coverage, strong reserves to issue these bonds. And I emailed our superintendent, but I'll go ahead and share some positive news since I wasn't so positive this morning. But to balance that off, we just got word this morning that Moody's Investor Service, one of the two major rating agencies in the United States, has upgraded our debt rating to AA2, which is a mid AA rating. It's, it's kind of a big deal for finance types. We have the highest debt rating of any school district in Nevada and this just raises it further. So we now have a mid AA rating from both rating agencies, which helps us save interest costs when we sell bonds like this. But I just wanted to take a second to talk about that. And, and it really is a reflection of the financial discipline this board has engaged in, the stability we brought to the district since about fiscal year 17. It's been a long road, we've been upgraded now twice. I think this is it. I think to shoot for a high AA is, is a little aggressive, but ambitious.
Go for it, CFO Mathers.
Just trying to manage expectations here, you know, so. But, but that certainly helps. And so with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, no lights is always a solid indication that you've done a great job here. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
All right, so I'll bring it back to this board. I am looking for a motion on item 3.03.
Thank you, President Smith. I move that the board of trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 25-004, excuse me, A2025A, gosh, I've got a frog. School improvement bond resolution authorizing the district to issue general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1 million. Oh, sorry, 100, yes, 100 million.
Second. Second amendment.
So we have a motion by Trustee Westlake. We have a second by Clerk Woodley. I see no lights on, I do not see any hands up from Dr. Nicolet. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. Okay, team, we're going to go ahead and take a brief break while we orient and prepare ourselves for item 304 and 305. It is 3:03 PM and we will bring things back to order at 3:15.
All right, before we hit the gavel, just want to confirm that we have trustee Nicolette with us. All right, before we hit the gavel, just want to confirm that we have trustee Nicolette with us. Let's see. Let's see. Trustee Nicolette, do we have you? Trustee Nicolette, do we have you?
Did you ask if I'm present? Did you ask if I'm present?
Oh, just wanted, well, before I hit the gavel, we're not back, uh, quite yet, but before I hit the gavel, I just want to make sure you're with us. Oh, just wanted, well, before I hit the gavel, we're not back quite yet, but before I hit the gavel, I just want to make sure you're with us. All right. All right. Okay. Okay. It is three twenty PM on this Tuesday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, and I would like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. It is three twenty PM on this Tuesday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, and I would like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. We just finished item three point zero three, and we are now about to start item three point zero four. We just finished item three point zero three, and we are now about to start item three point zero four. The presentation, discussion, and possible action for the Board of Trustees to accept the mid-year check on the status of the targets The presentation, discussion, and possible action for the Board of Trustees to accept the mid-year check on the status of the targets for the annual contractual requirement for the performance evaluation of Joe Ernst, for the annual contractual requirement for the performance evaluation of Joe Ernst, Washoe County School District Superintendent of Schools for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Washoe County School District Superintendent of Schools for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. This is an item for possible action. This is an item for possible action. And we have here with us today from Balanced Governance Solutions, the founder and creator of Balanced Governance, And we have here with us today from Balanced Governance Solutions, the founder and creator of Balanced Governance, Dr. Tom, Dr. Thomas Alsbray, I'll use your full name. Dr. Tom, Dr. Thomas Alsbray, I'll use your full name. And then, of course, we'll also be guided in this item with our superintendent, Joe Ernst. And then, of course, we'll also be guided in this item with our superintendent, Joe Ernst. So, um, before we get started, just want to have a little bit of orientation for this item. So before we get started, just want to have a little bit of orientation for this item. We'll do the same brief chat before we do item three oh five. We'll do the same brief chat before we do item three oh five. Um, uh, Dr. Alsbray is about to do this for us, but just to make sure that we are all perfectly clear as we go into this. Uh, Dr. Alsbray is about to do this for us, but just to make sure that we are all perfectly clear as we go into this. For this item, Dr. Alsbray will be doing a review of the entire process so that the community understands exactly where we are at now For this item, Dr. Alsbray will be doing a review of the entire process so that the community understands exactly where we are at now um, in context of the entire evaluation process. in context of the entire evaluation process. And then, um, uh, Mr. Ernst will be walking us through his, his mid-year evaluation. And then, um, uh, Mr. Ernst will be walking us through his, his mid-year evaluation. Um, and then I will also invite our deputy chief legal counsel to just provide us a little bit of direction on, for example, noticing and things that we will stay on focus with. Um, and then I will also invite our deputy chief legal counsel to just provide us a little bit of direction on, for example, noticing and things that we will stay on focus with.
Hi, everyone, uh, everybody, this is Sarah Montalvo, Deputy Chief General Counsel. Hi, everyone, uh, everybody, this is Sarah Montalvo, Deputy Chief General Counsel. Um, on this item, the topic we have to stay within the agenda topic, and it's just for the six targets that you have voted on back in June, I believe it was. Um, on this item, the topic we have to stay within the agenda topic, and it's just for the six targets that you have voted on back in June, I believe it was. And so no comments on anything unrelated to the six targets. And so no comments on anything unrelated to the six targets. And there will be a presentation, and the action item is just to either accept. And there will be a presentation, and the action item is just to either accept. Um, there can be some feedback regarding, again, only the six targets, nothing else. Um, there can be some feedback regarding, again, only the six targets, nothing else. Um, and the action item is limited, limited to acceptance of the, uh, the presentation by Superintendent Ernst. Um, and the action item is limited, limited to acceptance of the, uh, the presentation by Superintendent Ernst.
Fantastic. All right, Dr. Alsbray, take it away. Fantastic. All right, Dr. Alsbray, take it away.
All right. Thank you, President Smith and Board and Superintendent Ernst. Appreciate you having me here. All right. Thank you, President Smith and Board and Superintendent Ernst. Appreciate you having me here. Um, as you said, I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. Um, as you said, I'm going to go through this, um, relatively quickly. So, um, you're, the board, the Washoe County School District Board has adopted a governance model, and the governance model is called Balanced Governance. So, um, you're, the board, the Washoe County School District Board has adopted a governance model, and the governance model is called Balanced Governance. Balanced Governance, um, we wanted to, I wanted to share a little bit, and I've been asked to share a little bit about it with you. Balanced Governance, um, we wanted to, I wanted to share a little bit, and I've been asked to share a little bit about it with you. Um, this is some of the, these are some of the parameters that a balanced governance board uses that you see up on the screen right now. Um, this is some of the, these are some of the parameters that a balanced governance board uses that you see up on the screen right now. And basically, this, um, this particular approach to governance is unique amongst governance models. And basically, this, um, this particular approach to governance is unique amongst governance models. It's unique, um, in particular in that it emanates from research. It's unique, um, in particular in that it emanates from research. So there's been very little research, actual empirical research done on school boards in this country nationally. So there's been very little research, actual empirical research done on school boards in this country nationally. And, um, it turns out that there has only been one or two national, there's been two actually officially national studies. And, um, it turns out that there has only been one or two national, there's been two actually officially national studies. I conducted both of those studies. I conducted both of those studies. And so we took that data, I, as a professor, we basically reverse engineered it. And so we took that data, I, as a professor, we basically reverse engineered it. And we discovered that we could find some characteristics, some standards and practices that boards engage in that were very effective. And we discovered that we could find some characteristics, some standards and practices that boards engage in that were very effective. And it was very different from practices and standards that boards engaged in that weren't very effective. And it was very different from practices and standards that boards engaged in that weren't very effective. And then simply, here I am before you, because I began to have, uh, as a professor, began to have some districts call me and say, And then simply, here I am before you, because I began to have, uh, as a professor, began to have some districts call me and say, "Hey, would you come and tell us about that?" "Hey, would you come and tell us about that?" And so that's where this all comes from, all right? And so that's where this all comes from, all right? And, uh, this is on the screen right here, just a very quick overview of, of this idea of balanced governance. And, uh, this is on the screen right here, just a very quick overview of, of this idea of balanced governance. And what we find, and this has been supported now by all other research that's been done in the last thirty years, And what we find, and this has been supported now by all other research that's been done in the last thirty years, and a number of studies, uh, after my initial studies that have been conducted by, um, other researchers and students of mine. and a number of studies after my initial studies that have been conducted by, um, other researchers and students of mine. The most recent in two thousand twenty-four, a statewide study of balanced governance standards and practices linked to student performance gains in the state of Oregon The most recent in two thousand twenty-four, a statewide study of balanced governance standards and practices linked to student performance gains in the state of Oregon uh, by a researcher, Miles. uh, by a researcher, Miles. So, um, that's where we are. We find it to be a highly effective model. So, um, that's where we are. We find it to be a highly effective model. You see up here, what we discovered is that a board that's highly effective, the model that they use is not on the extremes of a continuum. You see up here, what we discovered is that a board that's highly effective, the model that they use is not on the extremes of a continuum. The board neither exists in a disengaged position, that is, we sometimes, we call it a rubber stamp board. The board neither exists in a disengaged position, that is, we, sometimes, we call it a rubber stamp board. Neither do we find a successful board's micromanaging districts, but we find that they are a balance between those things. Neither do we find a successful board's micromanaging districts, but we find that they are a balance between those things. They have a very specific and clearly understood role that they play, and I call that role informed oversight. They have a very specific and clearly understood role that they play, and I call that role informed oversight. This also has to do with the relationship the board has with the superintendent and who's, who does what, whose responsibilities are where and where we draw those lines. This also has to do with the relationship the board has with the superintendent and who's, who does what, whose responsibilities are where and where we draw those lines. And so one other thing that we found was that, uh, uh, very effective boards, uh, spend the majority of their time monitoring strategic goals. And so one other thing that we found was that, uh, uh, very effective boards, uh, spend the majority of their time monitoring strategic goals. And we found that the most effective boards' strategic goals are focused more heavily on goals that impact directly student learning. And we found that the most effective boards' strategic goals are focused more heavily on goals that impact directly student learning. And so that's basically what balanced governance is about. And so that's basically what balanced governance is about. Um, it is not a, um, a ten-step program. Um, it is not a, um, a ten-step program. It is a living program, I would describe it. It is a living program, I would describe it. We are always working to get better and better and better, um, in terms of our balance, okay? We are always working to get better and better and better, um, in terms of our balance, okay? And that's always the goal. And that's always the goal. And, uh, so we deal with things as they come. And, uh, so we deal with things as they come. Now, I mentioned this, and I was asked to present that because this plays over into the superintendent's evaluation model. Now, I mentioned this, and I was asked to present that because this plays over into the superintendent's evaluation model. It goes along with that idea of balanced governance. It goes along with that idea of balanced governance. And so we want the model, that we describe it as a growth model. And so we want the model, that we describe it, as a growth model. So the model needs to be designed so that we're, we want the best for our superintendent. So the model needs to be designed so that we're, we want the best for our superintendent. We want them to, um, of course, do well, we want them to improve, and that the evaluation is focused on that improvement. We want them to, um, of course, do well, we want them to improve, and that the evaluation is focused on that improvement. And so everything that we do is trying to meet that, uh, that particular goal. And so everything that we do is trying to meet that, uh, that particular goal. So in, uh, to, to the point of today's agenda item, then we include in that evaluation process a mid-year check. So in, uh, to, to the point of today's agenda item, then we include in that evaluation process a mid-year check. And that mid-year check is, um, in great part designed so that the superintendent and the board have an opportunity to, in the, about, in the middle of the year, And that mid-year check is, um, in great part designed so that the superintendent and the board have an opportunity to, in the, about, in the middle of the year, to say, is there anything, any big things that have affected the goals that we have set? to say, is there anything, any big things that have affected the goals that we have set? Um, like COVID, for example. Um, like COVID, for example. Um, it's so that the superintendent can share with the board, hey, there's some big changes that have occurred in our district. Um, it's so that the superintendent can share with the board, hey, there's some big changes that have occurred in our district. And, um, you know, we might have to rethink, uh, our goals. And, um, you know, we might have to rethink, uh, our goals. The, you know, just being open and honest about where we are. The, you know, just being open and honest about where we are. And likewise, it's possible for the board to say similar things, that there's areas that we really think that, that we'd like you to focus on for the remainder of the year. And likewise, it's possible for the board to say, uh, similar things, that there's areas that we really think that, that we'd like you to focus on for the remainder of the year. This is intended to be a completely informal process to the board. This is intended to be a completely informal process to the board. And by the way, let me say that this is the first time you have done this part of the balanced governance superintendent evaluation. And by the way, let me say that this is the first time you have done this part of the balanced governance superintendent evaluation. Um, just as things worked out, timing and, and so forth. Um, just as things worked out, timing and, and so forth, this is your first time doing it. This is your first time doing it. So if you have questions, understand that, please feel free, okay? So if you have questions, understand that, please feel free, okay? And I'm happy to explain. And I'm happy to explain. But the intent is of this is to, it's not an official action, it's simply a check-in. But the intent is of this is to, it's not an official action, it's simply a check-in. It's a time for informal conversation, informal, uh, and particularly a time, most importantly, It's a time for informal conversation, informal, uh, and particularly a time, most importantly, for the superintendent to share with you how things are going at the halfway point in the year. for the superintendent to share with you how things are going at the halfway point in the year. So you can see up here, and I want to just make a note, and then I'm going to hand this over to Superintendent Ernst here really quickly. So you can see up here, and I want to just make a note, and then I'm going to hand this over to Superintendent Ernst here really quickly. You'll notice items two and three, and this is what I'm talking about, that if we have a COVID situation or we have a critical circumstance, You'll notice items two and three, and this is what I'm talking about, that if we have a COVID situation or we have a critical circumstance, this, uh, we call it balance because we don't want to ignore that situation and wait till the end of an evaluation year, this, uh, we call it balance because we don't want to ignore that situation and wait till the end of an evaluation year, and then all of a sudden the superintendent's being evaluated on things that really aren't appropriate anymore. and then all of a sudden the superintendent's being evaluated on things that really aren't appropriate anymore. Now, in a typical year, I'm presuming this is a typical year for the Washoe County School District. Now, in a typical year, I'm presuming this is a typical year for the Washoe County School District. I don't anticipate a superintendent having any remarks about wanting to modify, revise, change goals of, uh, at all. I don't anticipate a superintendent having any remarks about wanting to modify, revise, change goals of, uh, at all. So this would be an unusual situation, but it's just an opportunity that's put in there as a place marker, okay? So this would be an unusual situation, but it's just an opportunity that's put in there as a place marker, okay? So that's where we are today. So that's where we are today. So, um, we're really going to focus on item number one up here. So, um, we're really going to focus on item number one up here. We will, um, which is the Superintendent Ernst sharing how things have gone so far and his perspective on that. We will, um, which is the Superintendent Ernst sharing how things have gone so far and his perspective on that. And then there will be an opportunity for board members, as you can see on this slide, to just make any suggestions on focusing in on any of the particular goals. And then there will be an opportunity for board members, as you can see on this slide, to just make any suggestions on focusing in on any of the particular goals. And I do want to remind the, the board, as this is part of balanced governance too, that we did select those target goals. And I do want to remind the, the board, as this is part of balanced governance too, that we did select those target goals. And so any suggestions of focusing in on those targets would be specifically discussing the, the six targets that were selected. And so any suggestions of focusing in on those targets would be specifically discussing the, the six targets that were selected.
And so, Dr. Alsbray, um, deputy, uh, chief legal counsel, Montalvo and I agree, if it's possible, we'd rather just finish the presentation And so, Dr. Alsbray, um, deputy, uh, chief legal counsel, Montalvo and I agree, if it's possible, we'd rather just finish the presentation so it orients everyone as to where we are in the process. so it orients everyone as to where we are in the process.
Sure. Sure.
So that everyone understands the cycle, where we are, and then, uh, stop at the slide that has the evaluation ratings. So that everyone understands the cycle, where we are, and then, uh, stop at the slide that has the evaluation ratings. And then we'll have superintendent do it. That way we can close with that and then just focus on that for the rest of it, if that's okay. And then we'll have superintendent do it. That way we can close with that and then just focus on that for the rest of it, if that's okay.
Sure, that's perfectly fine, yeah. Sure, that's perfectly fine, yeah. So we'll do that. So we'll do that. Now, uh, again, we wanted to, the board has been trained on this, of course, the superintendent is very much aware and supportive of this as well. Now, uh, again, we wanted to, the board has been trained on this, of course, the superintendent is very much aware and supportive of this as well. Um, but we wanted to share this in a public meeting, uh, as well, so everyone sees this. Um, but we wanted to share this in a public meeting, uh, as well, so everyone sees this. So obviously, the evaluation for this year, that's twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, we're doing the mid-year check today, kind of officially. So obviously, the evaluation for this year, that's twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, we're doing the mid-year check today, kind of officially. But this will continue on until the end of the year, and we wanted to review that, uh, the steps. But this will continue on until the end of the year, and we wanted to review that, uh, the steps. Now, I already mentioned to you. Now, I already mentioned to you.
Um, Dr. Alsbray? Dr. Alsbray?
Yeah. Yeah.
We're going to just take a brief break. We're going to just take a brief break.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so it's three thirty-one PM, and we're just going to go ahead and take a brief recess. Yeah, so it's three thirty-one PM, and we're just going to go ahead and take a brief recess. I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Okay, just a moment. Thank you. Okay, just a moment. Thank you. Okay, just a moment. Thank you. And we'll call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. We are right now in the middle, early portion of item 3.04 with Dr. Alsberry of Balanced Governance Solutions. Apologies while we took a brief break to deal with some technical difficulties, but we are ready to continue and we'll have our colleague join us as soon as possible. So sorry for that interruption. If you could continue.
Sure, not a problem. So you just see here what, something that I'd already mentioned about the intent of this, this evaluation model. This is a visual of the cycle of the evaluation model. You notice up at the, in, in the top, sort of, it would be about 1 o'clock there. The board has adopted, they've considered the various steps of this evaluation process and have formally adopted that. Some of the next steps, as you go clockwise around that, you'll see the, the goals. Some of the targets are selected. That's on tonight's board agenda as well. And then the mid-year performance check, which is what we're dealing with right now, is, is next. Now, as we go past this mid-year check for this year's evaluation, there's some additional steps or some that will take place, and I'll just show those to you. I'm going to go ahead here a couple. So one of the things that, that we'll do, that we do with this evaluation, this will be happening in the next part of the agenda, is that we want to select goals to focus in on. So if you didn't know, the Washoe County School District current strategic goals have, I believe, 32, if I counted right, 32 targets, specifically targeted goals for the superintendent to achieve at high levels. That's too many for it to achieve in a single year. And so part of this evaluation process is that early on, as in today, the board is going to engage in a process where they're going to focus in on five or six of those targets for the superintendent to focus in on in the evaluation for next year. Now, this has already been done, this process of focusing in on five or six goals, this was already done, as was mentioned by our council last June. And they aren't currently in place, those six targeted goals. And so that's what we'll be focusing on for the mid-year check. Here's another way to look at the process steps for this year's evaluation. You can see we've completed the first two steps. Today, we're on step number three. But we still have a few steps to go to finalize this evaluation. And that is to end up with a final evaluation report, okay? Now, you'll notice in the dates there, in creating a final evaluation report that would be the superintendent's final evaluation, that actually ends, if you look at item number six, in October. So one of the things I thought I'd mention is why October? Why, you might wonder, why wouldn't you finish the superintendent's evaluation, say, in May or June of this year, you know, while we're still in this school year? Why wait? Well, there's a whole bunch of reasons for that. One primary reason is that if you didn't realize that a lot of the data, including student achievement data, the district simply doesn't even receive until late in the summer, even into August sometimes. And so the data that actually shows how did we do in 2024-25, we, we don't have that yet. And so we want all that data to be in and available for the board before they make their final ratings on their superintendent. So that's a, a big reason why we wait until the following fall. We wanted to show the public tonight, just real briefly, how this works. So in September, so now we're assuming that all the data's available, it's in. The superintendent Ernst will have an opportunity to share any additional data with the board. Now, understand that in the balanced governance of a model that the board has adopted, they are focusing every single board meeting, receiving data and reports, and having discussions around student performance, around the strategic goals that they focused in on, that they selected those six goals. They are already doing that. They're already getting that data. But this September is an opportunity, because like I said, there's going to be some new data that came in over the summer. So it's a chance for Superintendent Ernst to bring whatever else has come in to share with the board before they ma, the board makes their evaluations, okay? Once that happens in September, then I will send an evaluation tool. And by the way, just to note, that evaluation tool that we'll use is in the record in tonight's board meeting. All right, so it's listed as one of the items. That tool will be filled out by each of the individual trustees. The, that, they will send that back to, in this case, myself. I'll take that, and there are two things in that evaluation document. One is our ratings, and I'll show you the rating scale in just a moment. There are ratings that are made of those goals that were focused, selected for focus, okay? And in addition to that, we ask board members in that evaluation to write any commendations that they have. And finally, to write any recommendations for growth that they have. So then I'll compile and average the rating scores. In addition to that, you'll see on the, over on the very right-hand side of this continuum, in October, I'll take all of the recommendations for growth that have come in from all of the trustees, and I'll put them on a form. I'll anonymize them and mix them up because we want the recommendations for growth to stand on their own. We don't want them attached to any particular trustee. I will send those back out to the board members, and they will rate those for the items based upon what their own particular belief. Now, what we're after with this, it's not uncommon, and I can tell you that the first time we did this exercise a year ago, we had, I believe it was 65, 65 or 69, it was something like that, recommendations for growth. That's too many in one year for anyone to handle. Plus, it is possible. I have seen this. I'm not speaking about Washoe County, but I have seen this where you'll get recommendations from growth from different trustees, which will be in contradictory to each other. One will tell the superintendent to do this, and the other trustee will tell them to do just the opposite. And so because of that, we don't give the superintendent seven individual evaluations. We need to see what is the consensus of the board believe. And that's a main component of balanced governance as well, is that the board speaks as a group, not as individuals. And so in order to do that in a more efficient, effective way, all of the anonymous recommendations for growth go back to the trustees. They will rate those, and they'll have an opportunity to say, these are, this is a critical area of growth, needs to be in the evaluation, all the way to, I don't agree with this recommendation for growth. We will take those ratings, and, and you'll see that up here. And we'll try to narrow those down through the rating calculation to the ones, any that the board said they, it should be included or it must be included. So any of those comments, recommendations for improvement that were neutral, rated as neutral, or we don't agree that they should be on there, wouldn't be included. But those that, that are, should be on there, must be on there, would generally be included in the final evaluation report, okay? So that's how we do that, and that's how we come to a consensus. Now, I promised you that I'd show you the rating scale. So on the six selected targets, goal targets, we have, these are the rating scales. And the words connected to those rating scales. And a note, an important note, I think, is that the board adopted this rating scale specifically because it is the same rating scale and terms that are used for the evaluation of teachers and principals, other administrators in the Washoe County School District. So they're, they're using the same terms and ratings, cutoff scales for the superintendent as everyone else in the district. As I mentioned, there is a, on record in tonight's meeting, it's been posted, the actual evaluation tool that gets sent out to each of the, each of the board members. And that is my overview. So if there aren't any questions, I'll hand it back over to President Smith and-
No, I think that was a great overview. Thank you so much for sharing what the whole process is, where we are in the cycle. And now I think we can move on to the next portion, which is the review of the mid-year update.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Alsberry, thanks for being here today. I am looking forward to sharing these mid-year evaluation progress. I think it is a collective effort as we move forward to reach our targets, fully understanding the importance of my leadership and then our leadership as we're moving forward, and recognizing what balanced governance tells us about how we move forward to, to achieve those goals. So the first one is around the six targets that have been identified. And so just kind of want to come back to what those are. I will go into each of those, but you can see the target named. I won't read each of them because I'll go into each of the six more specifically. And then you can see the progress made towards each of those goals. And recently, we had an opportunity to share at a principal's academy, some of the progress that is being made. And I think our principals were very pleased, knowing that their leadership is helping us achieve these various targets. So target one, we decided to focus on implementing a pre-K through grade five standards-aligned curriculum focused on literacy and numeracy. What you can see on the left are the action steps that have occurred. And then on the right, you can see the progress that has been made. What I wanted to do was focus on where I think some of the most substantive progress has been made. So you can see that we have developed a K-5 milestone progression document. And what this does is this tracks and measures our specific district and school growth in several key standards. And we've often talked about how important it is to try to reduce testing for our students. And so what we tried to do was really align the tool. We worked hard to ensure the standards chosen were not only pivotal standards, but could also be measured through iReady diagnostics so as to not require any additional assessment. I'll jump down to letters training. Recently, we've shared a video with you. Dr. Alsberry talked about the milestones and momentum presentations that we are bringing forward that share the data and the progress throughout the year. Our letters training, if you can see there, 425 teachers and administrators have received it. And we have almost 50% of our kindergarten teachers having received the training. And then 30% of our first and second graders. And what we're seeing is some of the most comprehensive reading training that has ever occurred in our school district. And what we're seeing is tremendous progress being made. And this is, you know, I, I would really very much like to recognize the efforts of, of folks that have helped lead these efforts, Dr. Parks and our area superintendents. They have really been responsible for recognizing how important letters training is. And we have started with some early adopters at a couple of schools. And then we have seen incredible progress at each of these schools. We also, you can see another target is the transition materials for school administrators and kindergarten and, and first grade educators. Again, some of this has some repetition because we have shared some of this information in previous milestone and momentum. Again, trying to keep everyone informed throughout the process on the progress that is being made. But what's really fantastic is a big part of our strategic plan is about doing so in partnership with our families. And right here, you can see that this, we are working to make sure that each school year, each kindergartner receives about two books per month to add to their take-home library. So not as only is it benefiting those current kindergarten students, but their younger brothers and sisters are now getting a li, a larger library. And so you can really see the efforts that we're making here to implement a pre-K through grade five standards-aligned curriculum. So that, that's a little bit about each of that. Now, what I'll share on the next slide is the progress that is being made in an effort to try to quantify where some of the initial progress that was on the first slide came from. You can see that in this, we can see iReady data. Now, those are end-of-the-year standards, just to orient everybody against the data. And so in the fall, when our students took that, that 25% were proficient in reading. We're already at the mid-year mark, up to 43%, and with that anticipated trajectory, very hopeful on what we'll see going forward there. Phonics and phonemic awareness, you can, we know are the building blocks of good literacy instruction. Again, we have done tremendous professional learning that's been provided by our academics team, by our area superintendents, our principals have actively engaged, and so have our teachers, really opting in to get these trainings. And then you can see the progress that's occurred with numbers and operations. And so again, you're seeing substantial increases as we're going forward. And again, those percentages are measuring the, the grade level proficiency at the end of the year. So I think there is a good deal of encouragement with that. On this one, we noted that it was moderate progress. And, you know, I, I would say that the effort of our team under Dr. Lamarcas, Dr. Davidson, and also our school principals has been tremendous. The belief in this is that our extra and co-curricular activities will help create deeper engagement for our students. And so you can see that what we've done is we've conducted a district-wide needs assessment to inventory clubs, identify challenges, and find ways to expand this. We've created a system of tracking. And I think this cannot be overstated, how important it is to actually use good, solid data to track progress. Prior to this year, we had not even built a data system to measure how many clubs and activities our students participated. This has been tremendous work that has occurred with our accountability team, again, with Dr. Lamarcas, our area superintendents. We've expanded opportunities for teachers and non-certified staff to sponsor clubs and activities, and I'll note that in the next slide. You can see the progress that has been made, and it's been really tremendous progress. And when I say that it really is a collective effort, much of our board's commitment has been around increasing slot pay and looking at Appendix B. And all of our folks have worked very hard to bring that forward together. So you can see the next steps that we have on there. Those are identified. So certainly, if we're at moderate progress, we have work to do, and welcome that work, and we'll continue stepping forward into that work. But what you see here is some of the data that tracks. We now have 100% of our middle and high school students being tracked on the clubs and activities that they're participating in. And the 33% is just bumped up to 44% as far as students that are enrolled. So we're just under 50% of our entire middle school and high school student body participating in extra and co-curricular activities. Again, this is tremendous leadership from many of those that are, are joining us here this afternoon. When you look at the next one, this is an actual measure of the total number of new clubs. We have created a total number of 195 new clubs for our students to participate in. New clubs, not existing clubs, which you can see we had before, okay? But these are new clubs, totaling 300 clubs and activities, co-curricular, extracurricular activities. And I wanted to share, because there are tremendous things. So from our academic clubs, what we have, so we have math, count, speech and debate, history, honor society. We have technology clubs, coding clubs, robotic, 3D printing clubs, computer clubs. We have fine and performing arts clubs, drama clubs, photography clubs, drawing, guitar clubs. We have multicultural clubs. We have hobbies. We have video game clubs. There's an interesting movement that's starting to occur around esports and perhaps ways in which we might be able to expand that throughout the state of Nevada, to pull in students in ways that they haven't ever had chances to before. We have leadership and service clubs, student voice council, and so on and so on. And so this has really been tremendous progress. And again, I really believe, as I started the year back at our first academy, that it is all about the importance of team. And our team has helped bring this together. Our board has provided leadership, has helped develop policy to help all of these pieces move forward. And so I think there is a, a good deal to, to celebrate, sorry. You can also see the dollars that we allocated, the total increases in slots, and the number of additional hours we're providing for, for student engagement. So I know we put it at moderate progress. We'll keep pushing forward to do even more, but when I look at it, I'm pretty pleased with those initial efforts, knowing really that this only began to be implemented this school year. And so I think there's a lot to build on there. Target three, expanded opportunities for parents, guardians, and family members to be involved with their children's education. And so on this one, you can see action steps. We've increased, and I'll show you the data on that, our parent home visits. The family graduation advocates, when you look at this data and you can see the amount of personalized contact that's being made from all levels of staff, but in particular, our family graduation advocates. It's, it's really profound, seeing the efforts that we are making as a school district to reach those students that may not be as engaged as others. to reach those students that may not be as engaged as others. We've increased opportunities for staff to be volunteer, or for parents and guardians to be school-based volunteers. We have also continued to offer school choice. Again, when you look at the progress, we've nearly, haven't doubled, but we've made significant progress on our parent-teacher home visits, our family grad advocates. And so let me take you to the data itself. And so you can see comparisons fall to fall. You can see in the blue, last year, number of schools participating in parent home visits. We had 25, again, under the leadership of Dr. Lamarka. And I know he would give this leadership to all of those members of his team who have led these efforts. But we've grown that up to 41 schools where we have parent-teacher home visits. And we have been out celebrating those schools at the start of this school year. Recently, in school visits, seeing ways in which the school, these parent-teacher home visits are getting deeper and deeper and more and more intentional in the ways that we're building bonds with our families has really been, really something to be proud of. You can see the number of staff completing it. So we went nearly up 100 additional staff completing these parent-teacher home visits. And I can tell you, as a former principal who participated in parent-teacher home visits, they're meaningful. And when you go to a family's home and you listen to our students' hopes and dreams and you share these with families, parents, and you understand what they want from their children, it moves you in ways, as an educator, that gets you back to your building, working even harder to try to support those students. And then you can see the number of, total number of visits. And so again, we're making real good progress in that area. The number of family graduation advocates, again, this was really about getting a family graduation advocate at each of our high schools. If you look at the number of academic meetings that have occurred in the fall, really individually working with students, some really strong progress there. School choice, one of the things that we have worked to deepen in our school district is the opportunity for our students and their families to identify schools that they think that their child will thrive. And that may not be the home school, but it might be another school in our district. And a lot of our schools have a lot of different strengths. And so this year, in our first round of school choice, and mind you again, this is now an automated system. So we moved from manual processes to automated systems so that we can get more efficiency. Earlier in the budget, we talked about operational efficiencies. I can tell you, those that have worked closest to school choice, welcome those operational efficiencies. And so we are really making progress in that area. You can see that we've placed over 1,000 students in their top two choices of the schools that they've selected. And over 1,000 of our students going to their non-zoned school and being placed at their first choice. Again, those are defined by the physical capacity, the number of teachers, et cetera, per grade level, per subject. Those are all aspects that get weighed in. And so I think we're making some real good progress in that area. And then JJ, maybe if we can go on to the next slide. So on this one, this is about really improving student safety, including the reduction in assaults, our single-point entry installation, and improved sense of safety for staff. And recently, our school police, we had a central office survey. And it was specific to each department in our school district. This came at the request of the schools that we serve. And our school police received a 92% in terms of the way that they feel supported. Certainly, that's under the leadership of Chief Moore, all of our school police team. And so you can see that we're making progress. Again, I'll go to the data slide in a moment. But not only are we making progress on reducing the number of behavioral events, but increasing the overall sense of safety. Recently, we shared some climate survey that shows some of that sense of improved safety. And so we see that we have hired campus monitors. Again, when I say it's a team effort, these are board decisions that have come that we have all recognized the value of what campus monitors bring to our schools. We've got the e-bikes, again, operational efficiency. We can get from point A to point B a little bit quicker. And there's a lot of value in that when you are working on curbing misbehaviors at a school. We have 75 sites, we saw in our safety presentation, using new radio systems so that we are having better communication to more quickly respond. We are continuing to use synergics in very meaningful ways. Again, what I like about the milestones and momentum presentations is we're sharing some of this information as we go. And I think this is a nice opportunity to just reiterate some of the efforts. Synergics has certainly brought a great sense of safety. And as Chief Moore would tell us, it seconds when we need to respond. And so synergics has been something that has allowed us to do that. Our single-point of entry, we've had six schools in the past year with single-point of entry. Again, really piloting these programs to get feedback from staff. Because one thing is the physical safety. It's then the implementation from the principal to the staff, to the students, when there's multiple doors that can be entered. And so we're working closely with our school site staff to make sure that not only is the single-point of entry effective, but the implementation that's occurring in each building is consistent to maximize the use of the physical upgrades. So when you look there, you can see that we have six single points of entry. 100% of the schools have now the visitor management system. We're continuing to train on that, pardon me. We're continuing to train on that. I think we've still got some room to go. We've just recently been able to install these. Again, we've worked through procurement processes, and we've worked with a various team of people to find the best visitor management systems so that when we have people coming into our building, we know who they are, the background, and we can track all of this from a data point of view. I just shared the 92%. You can see 100% of our schools have synergics in its use. And so again, we're making progress in this area. What I would also say is, as with all things, there's always progress that can be made. And as Dr. Alsberry said, this is a mid-year eval check-in. We're looking forward into September and to October. We have single points of entry that we now have construction starting in August at three more high schools. We have construction starting at six more high schools that's going to occur, that's going to start in June. So we're working to complete all of our high schools as single points of entry. And I know this has been a real commitment that we've made around school safety. And then reduction in assaults and misbehaviors, we've really worked to do that, and we will continue to do that. We've recently made some academic organizational adjustments to try to look at the integration of functions to make sure that we are maximizing the efforts of all. And so you can see the action steps. We have 327 teachers and administrators that have been trained, over 1,000 teachers and administrators, 10 central office departments, one community in our MTSS systems and behavior support. And I will tell you this, one of the things that we have tried to do is build capacity while not pulling principals out of buildings. And that's a real interesting dynamic that you're trying to balance, because we all recognize the importance of that. And again, under Dr. Lamarka and his teams, we have found all kinds of ways to create these trainings by not trying to pull people out of their buildings to make sure that they're there to handle the day-to-day affairs that are so important, being available and visible during passing and these types of things, to make sure that our schools are staying safe. And so you can see that we have fewer assaults. Again, this is a fall-to-fall comparison. You can see the trainings that have occurred, particularly around de-escalation approaches. One of the, really the most effective with high-needs behaviors is teaching people how to work in spaces where you de-escalate behaviors. And we still have plenty of room to grow in this area, but we're certainly stepping forward. And then I think something for all of us to be proud of, that when we look at our staff climate survey, 90% of our teachers right now, 90% of our entire staff, and I'll tell you, this has been the highest level of staff participation we've ever had in staff surveys. 90% are reporting that they're feeling safe. And so again, this is tremendous work by so many people here today. Target five, strengthening recruiting and retention and advancement pathways. This got talked about today during our budget work session. And I think collectively, we all recognize how important this effort is. We talked about at the start of the year, during the summer, we had significant number of vacancies that we were going to start the school year with together. Our chief human resource officer, Doug Owen, along with our area superintendents, our deputy superintendent, found ways to make sure that that is not how we started the year. And we were able to significantly reduce vacancies compared to the prior year. And then you can see improved retention rates. Certainly, we've made progress in that. Again, that's come from collective efforts that can, that have occurred from state-level funding to the efforts of the board in terms of some of those factors that are contributing to those retention rates. And so when you look at the increase in retaining our staff fall to fall, you can see that we've retained more staff. When I often talk about culture and climate, yes, I think that the earnings that our staff make are significant. And I cannot tell you how happy I am to see the progress that was made last year for our educators that was long overdue, and I'm really pleased on that. Additionally, that's one way in which you're able to retain. But also, the climate and culture that we build together in our school district contributes to people's willingness to stay or maybe not stay. And so retention is built on so many factors. Again, I think one of the things to be most proud of that we're often asked when presenting to legislature is we eliminated 140 teacher vacancies to start this year. So that means 140 classrooms where there would not have been a teacher, we were able, through the leadership and the tremendous efforts that occurred, get that down to just 12. And again, this year, we're very hopeful that we can take that down to zero. But there's work to be done. There's plenty of work to be done. Leadership advancement pathway opportunities, great things happening there for all levels. So you look at, another aspect of retention is pathways forward, pathways to increased responsibility and opportunities. And so here, you can see that we've built coursework for our administrators, for our protext, for our central office staff. And so we're really trying to layer in a variety of efforts that help with that staff retention. And indeed, when you look at climate survey data, the efforts are being realized in the feedback that we're getting from our staff as far as recognition of the efforts that we are offering to them as they're going forward. And finally, number six is around increased participation and access. And this is a big part, the access. And success for all students in advanced coursework, dual-credit, and CTE classes. And so you can see action steps. Again, when I say it's a collective effort, last year, there was board action that said, "We will pay for students' fees to access advanced coursework." We're seeing that pay off. We know that we have Debbie Smith CTE Academy, and there are tremendous new signature academies that are being opened. There was a question around some of the new signature academies within some of the board questions. And you can see some of the expansion that's occurring with CTE. We've talked about the aviation earlier this school year. You can see that advanced placement, the amount of tuition that we have paid for our students is something for us to be really proud of. That was a courageous step that took many years to be willing to move forward in that way. You can see that we've allocated $50,000 to pay for our students to get industry-recognized credentials for their CTE programs. We've doubled the number of high school offerings in concurrent enrollment. Really, a wonderful new frontier that still has plenty of opportunity for our students. And we recognize the impact that our educational system has on the economy. And so you're also helping students work through educational experiences to get to the workforce more quickly via signature academies, via graduating from college, et cetera. And so these are all efforts aligned with that. Now here, this is one that I think is worth just kind of looking at. Really, you look at it, and you can see from the fall to the fall, '23, '24 to '24, '25, we've really nearly doubled the number of dual-credit. And so you think about what this opportunity means for our students. I think there's probably people in the room that have had their students go through and have, get dual credits in high school. And it's an amazing opportunity. The collaboration that we have with our higher-ed institutions only continues to deepen and continue to deepen this entire pathway. Consequently, you can see that the AP and the CTE course enrollment has declined a bit. And so that's certainly something that is worth us keeping our eye on. Again, you can see down at the very bottom, students might be counted in 61, 62, and 63 if they took multiple course types. So overall, when you look fall to fall, you can see just a slight increase, but you can see the momentum now going towards dual credits and concurrent enrollment. And then finally, I think something very important to us as a collective leadership team. And in that, you can see dual-credit access. In every one of our student populations, we have seen access improve. While it's maybe a step forward towards better proportionality, we always have work to do as a school district to increase proportionality. And so, but this is signs of encouragement, and I think that's really important. That was part of our message to our principals last Friday, is being able to recognize that there are a lot of encouraging things that are happening. And again, that is because of the tremendous work that is occurring everywhere throughout our district. So this is kind of an overview of the six targets that have been identified at the start of the year, a mid-year evaluation update relative to progress that's being made. And so I'm very proud to share this with all of you this afternoon.
All right, that was fantastic. This is an action item. I don't see any lights on quite at the moment, so this might be a good time to go to public comment before we have any continuing comments here or take action to accept the mid-year review. JJ?
I have no cards for this item.
All right. All right, let's take it back to the group. Very informative, incredibly, incredibly informative. I'm particularly grateful for the use of data. I love the way that the information was presented. It is, of course, for this Board of Trustees, but more importantly, it's for our public, our families, and hopefully, all of our members of the press that are following along as well. So I personally really enjoyed the way that the information was laid out and the thoroughness of it. Thank you so much. And seeing no other lights on, this is an item for action. And so we do need to accept the mid-year review. And so I will look to any of our colleagues for that. Oh, Clark Woodley.
Madam President, I just wanted to make a comment. As you stated here, use of data, there's so much data in here. These numbers are like blowing my mind. I mean, when I see something that goes from 150 to 12, that's enormous. That's amazing. So I want to express my appreciation to you and your staff. You guys are doing a great job. You guys are doing a great job, this is, this is wonderful. Thank you all, sincerely, thank you.
Just to comment on that, along with the numbers, but we were talking about having the qualitative success that goes with it, all those things, whether they're working or not. And I think your input and your dialogue kind of shows that, you know, we're getting the input from the staff, and we're finding what's working. So I appreciate that effort that you guys are doing.
Yeah, this is sort of a mic drop moment. So, you know, evaluation or no evaluation, this is just tremendous, tremendous presentation. It's a really great gut check. I think you highlighted some, some amazing data. As President Smith said, I appreciate how the data was laid out as well. I mean, that's how we measure the success. And, you know, and you're not bashful to, to show those areas that need to be improved, you know. And I was surprised to see CTE and, and AP placement decline, for instance. So, well done Superintendent Ernst, I'm proud to have you here. I'm proud that you're serving, all of us are proud of this wonderful team. And, you know, you started off talking about hopes and dreams, and that's, that's really why we're here, for creating those hopes and dreams for the future of our, of our children, for the future of our community, our state, our nation. That's the core, so thank you, God bless you.
Thank you. I am probably most impressed with the number of our children getting involved in clubs and becoming part of that, their community. I mean, their family there at the schools, getting in those clubs, and that's what's going to keep them inside the classrooms and inside the school, engaging the families, it's working. I mean, it's absolutely working. And what's more important than it's working is that this is so good for kids. This is just so good for them, and it's great for families, so I'm, I'm really pleased. Thank you, and thank you for everyone's hard work in all of this. It's, it's really appreciated, and it is working.
I have a, just a couple of thoughts. So one of the first sections was about, you, you shared some data on iReady. And I know, I know last year it was a little, it was a tough rollout because it was new for everyone, and that's always really hard. But I have to say, in all of the school visits I've done, I've been so incredibly impressed at how seamless it seems this year for all of the classrooms. Like, the little kids have iPads and they scan, and they're so quick at it. And the teachers' feedback has been incredible. They're, they're often saying they feel so, so much better about having these conversations with families, with the student themselves. So I just, I, I want to, I want to impress upon the fact that your team has done a great job of ensuring that that rollout has been worth every penny that we've spent on it. And I think that's really the important piece, right, is that connection to, we made an investment, and you're doing a great job of making sure that it's been worth our effort and our time and the money, right? And I, I think that goes to the open positions, you know, filling all those classrooms. We're making sure that there's a certified teacher in those classrooms that's supporting our kids. And that's evident in every school I've been in, that the amount of clubs and activities that, that, you know, the principals are shouting from the rooftops that they have. I mean, three hundred clubs in our middle schools and high schools, forty-four percent of our students participating, that is, those numbers are, as a secondary teacher, I can tell you, that is, that's really, really incredible numbers. And the last thing I, I just want to say is, I've personally, our family has benefited from the dual enrollment, and I can tell you, as, as someone who, you know, has a public-sized salary, it has been monumental for our family. Our daughter will start college with thirty-six college credits because of dual enrollment. And we're not alone. We have a lot of students that are getting the English 101s out of the way, and, and now they can start college to have, they're, they can really dive into what they want to do. And, and that is, that is an incredible investment that we've made in our, in our students. So again, kudos to you and the team for everything you've done. It is very evident in every single school visit I've done that all of this work is across the board. It's not just happening in one or two schools. It's very clear across the board, so great job.
Want to make sure that we welcome Trustee Nicolette in a moment, if, if you want to get yourself queued up. So a couple of data points that really jump out at me that I am really thrilled about. The first is the Schools of Choice program, and seeing that nearly ninety-five percent of our students. And the reason why I am so impressed by that data point for this target three is because we have an outstanding number of educational programs and options. We are a portfolio of education options. And by maximizing the effect of this program, as you've demonstrated here on this slide for target three, it really allows our families to best find the educational opportunity for them and their student. And so I love that, so I'm really, really impressed with that data point. And the other one that I wanted to bring attention to, that is deeply meaningful to me, and I think it is, again, the beam upon which all of our pillars emanate, and that is feeling safe. So to see that we've had an improvement in school staff reporting feeling safe, to me, is so much. It is the ground upon which so much of this success is built on, because we cannot have this academic achievement, we cannot have this participation in clubs if we don't have that sense of safety and belonging. And so I'm incredibly impressed by this, and very, very thankful to the team for accomplishing this. So I, I just, there's so many wonderful points here. It's been really lovely hearing from my colleagues as well about the things that have jumped out at you. And quite frankly, with this many wonderful things, it is easy to have different things jump out at us because there's a lot here to celebrate, so congratulations. Trustee Nicolette, I want to make sure to invite you in the conversation.
Thank you.
And if for some reason we have bandwidth issues, maybe you can also turn your video off.
I can do that. So because of the fragile nature of this...
Trustee Nicolette, you've been muted, so we're going to unmute you if you can hear. Okay, there we go.
Bravo.
We, we all know what bravo means, okay, fantastic. Annie, do you have anything that you want to share? I want to make sure to invite your voice in on this.
Yeah, I really, really liked, I think it was target six and the one on clubs. I think it's really encouraging that, that's something that we're focusing on on a bigger level because school belonging can be really difficult, but having clubs and tracking that, I think, really adds a huge piece of belonging to a student's life in their schools. I do have a question, and maybe Superintendent Ernst will know, but there's some clubs that are included in Infinite Campus, but some of the clubs I'm in aren't included, so I don't know why that is. But there's just like, like the big clubs like NHS and stuff are included, but our Community Service Club or like French Club, maybe it's just my school because we might have a different system, I'm not sure. But like, I don't have that in Infinite Campus, so if you know, I, that'd be great to hear.
Annie, I always appreciate your comments. They're always so insightful, and they always help us get better, and you always have a succinct way of saying so. So I think in that, I think it's an opportunity for us to check, to make sure. Again, we've just built the, the system out this year. It's very possible that we may not just be tracking those. So while we've made some progress, we want to make sure that we get every club and activity. So I encourage you to, you know, talk with the admin team, and I know that they'll circle us in, and we'll make sure that we get those in there.
All right, great, thank you. And then also the dual credit, looking at the data of when it was, like, the increasing or decreasing. As a student who does take a lot of AP classes, dual credit feels so much more encouraging to me than AP because AP, you're kind of taught like, if you pass, you might get a credit. And dual credit's like, you're going to get this credit, and it will be accepted, and it's just so much more hopeful and so many more reasons to take it. So I think seeing the decrease in AP classes, I think that's not a concern. That's actually a good thing because those dual credit classes have been really great at our school, and we have so many students, like, those classes are overflowing at McQueen. And it's just such a good opportunity for students, and I've noticed that. I mean, I've been taking them through the college, but then having them in person makes it that much easier. And I think it's been great with how fast we've been heading into that because it's, it's a major increase, even from last year to this year, how many dual credit classes we've offered. So that is really great, and I think those were the two things that stood out most to me.
Thanks, Annie.
Yeah, I want to plus-one that too. Annie, thank you so much for providing that perspective from a student so that we have greater context based on what you're experiencing in the classroom as well. Thank you. All right, team, so it is an action item.
If I may, Madam? I move that the Board of Trustees accept the mid-year targets update from Superintendent Ernst.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Clerk Woodley, we have a second by Trustee Hall. Seeing no lights on or hands up, so no discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those oppose, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero, thank you so much, and wonderful job Superintendent Ernst. Thank you so much. And, yes. And good job, team, that was our first one. We've never done one of those, so thank you, Dr. Alsberry, for guiding us through. All right, team, that closes item three point zero four, and now we move on to item three point zero five. This is the presentation, discussion, and possible action to consider and approve the goals and objectives for the annual contractual requirement for the performance evaluation of Joe Ernst, Washoe County School District Superintendent of Schools for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This is an item for possible action. And we have now, of course, still with us, Dr. Thomas Alsberry of Balanced Governance Solutions, and also myself, Beth Smith, as the President of the Board of Trustees. And we're not going to revisit all the stuff we already talked about in three oh four, we're just going to go right into this process.
All right, thank you very much. Can I take a very quick liberty? I'm out of order, I know, so you can stop me, President Smith, but good job, thank you. There, just for the listening public who think, you know, governance models, you know, who cares? What difference does it make? What you just experienced, that's the difference. I watch boards across the country, and I can tell you what you just experienced, they're not doing. They're not setting goals that are specific to educational improvement. They're not receiving data, they're not having that as their focus. They're spending hours and hours and hours in meetings debating over the minutia of operations and management issues that have little to do with what's impacting kids. And that's what we see in highly effective boards, and so congratulations to, for being a great example of that. And, and I also want to brag on you guys a little bit, that's, there's a reason why I was presenting with Superintendent Ernst and President Smith this year at the, at the Nevada School Board Association Conference. Washoe is being looked at as a model board in their operations, so nice work.
Thank you, Dr. Alsberry, we, we try.
So going on to our topic, our next topic, we have to, again, in this evaluation process, those goals, and I just want to make a point, you saw, we narrowed back in June thirty-two goals to those six. And that was a lot, right, wasn't it? As we, I mean, that, there was, there's a lot of work to be done. If people say, "Well, why not, why not all thirty-two?" You, hopefully you saw why we focus in on six, because then you can get really substantive work done and really target your efforts in a, in a really more meaningful way. So that was a great example. We need to do that again, and we need to do, select that, you as a board, that is, need to select out of the thirty-two current strategic targets, six to seven performance targets. And this would be for next year's superintendent's evaluation, the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. Now, you might ask, the viewing public might ask, why are we doing that now? Why pick the goals for next year when we're in the middle of this year? Why not wait until we start, maybe in September, the new year, and then set the goals? Well, the reason is that if the superintendent has a knowledge of the areas that the board wants him to focus in on, at this point, he has the rest of this year, all the way until the, the school year starts, in order to put infrastructures, personnel, finances, when the budget is approved by the board, they've got a better idea of what are we focusing in on for next year's budget. So all of those things have to be planned ahead of time. These things don't just happen, you know, overnight. There's a lot of work that goes behind, so this is why we do it now. And so there's going to be plenty of time for everybody to gear up for next year. Already, we're starting that this year, yes?
And I'll jump in on that too. So earlier today, we had a special meeting, we had a work session of the Board of Trustees on budget. The other reason why this is really important to do now is, team, as we know, the budgetary allocations are our responsibility. By knowing what we have together voted on to provide targets and goals and objectives for the superintendent, that will allow us to also guide our budgetary conversation. If we choose a goal for Superintendent Ernst that we then do not fund, how are we allowing him to be successful? And so it provides the opportunity to build a system in place to achieve success starting on July first, which is the start of the new year. And it also allows us another dimension of our budgetary process to understand the goals we've set for the superintendent and the district, and to make sure that we are also allocating funding in order to achieve those things.
Great, thank you. So we're going to go about an, an activity to try and, again, get us to that six to sevens performance targets. And you'll notice that the number has jumped, and I want to get to this. I was, we've been saying five to six, and now you see I saying, I'm saying six to seven. Why, why am I saying that, why is that on the slide? One of the things that we, has been well-understood in the Washoe District, and they have implemented this throughout the system, including the hiring of Superintendent Ernst. Then they incorporated balanced governance into the hiring process, they've incorporated that into their policies. Everything they do, and the, the planning behind it, and the framing of it, is connected in some way to the governance model, so we can all work together in sync, right? It's, it makes it critically important that everybody in the system continue to support, participate in, and get better and better at these, the ideas behind balanced governance approach of how we do business. And so because of that, I had incorporated a goal. It's, it's a, just a general goal, and it's about balanced governance. The goal is on your sheet, if you'll take a look, trustees. It's the number, it's on number one, it's target number one, under Balanced Governance Standards and Practices. And it says, "The superintendent supports and practices balanced governance standards and participates in individual and team training on balanced governance along with professional development in other areas of personal, professional interest." And so a few weeks ago, because I have been asking all of my clients, every board that works with balanced governance, has included this in their evaluation as a baseline goal or a baseline target. And it's just there, it's sort of the one that's always there. And then they select additional goals that are specific to their own strategic goals. So I contacted Superintendent Ernst and asked him, would he be okay? Would he be comfortable with me adding this for next, this next year's goals on the list? And he graciously said, and I understand it was a little bit late notice, I, you know, it was just a few weeks ago, but he graciously said, "Yes, yes, you can add that to the list, to our targets, okay, for selection." So I wanted to point that out specifically, the importance of that, okay, in my recommendation. So that's why the number went up six to seven, okay? It gives you, it, because I didn't want to diminish your ability to pick five or six goals that are specific to your strategic goals, and then you would also, you would still have room for the other one. for the other one, if that's the board's wishes, okay?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I have a question, Dr. Alsberry, because if I remember correctly, we also have a self-assessment that we do for ourselves. And when I read this, and it's in the, it's in the word, it's self-balanced governance. So it begs the question for me, will we see this in our self-assessment as well?
Yeah, you have it already in your self-assessment. So that's another reason that it, it made sense for me to incorporate that into the superintendency evaluation for all my clients, because you guys already have been doing that. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, so with that, we just have the process to go about, oh, yeah.
Could we just take a moment and help under, and help, of course, the board knows this because we've done preemptive training, but can you just take a moment to explain why some of these are yellow for people that are following along at home or looking at the attachment?
Absolutely, yep. That's where we were headed. So this is the slide right here, and I wanted to explain, because Superintendent Ernst is going to have another opportunity to present to us, so thank you again for that. What you have is the 32 aforementioned targets, plus one more from balanced governance right there. That makes 33. Now, what I asked Superintendent Ernst to do, because obviously, as we've said, you can't focus on 32. We need to scale it down to a manageable amount. I asked him to go through these targets from Washoe's strategic goal and, and select the targets that he believes are strategically the best targets to focus in on for next year, okay? And, and he selected 14, I believe, if I'm counting right. He selected 14 of the 32 targets for focus, okay? And that's what, those are the ones that are highlighted. So in just a moment, what I'm going to ask the board to do, and you see that on the slide, I'm going to ask the board for each one of these strategic goal targets to rate them. And the ratings are must include, you must include this goal, this target. May include, you may include it. I'm neutral. I don't have strong feelings either way. Or don't include this item for next year. And I'm going to ask the board then to select, and, and I, I would give direction to two things. One, and this is a balanced governance concept, because the board hires an expert superintendent for a reason, and so the superintendent is saying, looking at the educational program, the items highlighted strategically make the most sense for next year's focus goals. So I would strongly encourage the board to give priority consideration to the highlighted areas that Superintendent Ernst has pointed out as critical ones. The second thing I would direct you to do is, as you're doing your ratings, please realize that if we're going to whittle this down to now six or seven, you can't, you can't mark everything as a must include, okay? So, yeah, so, because we'll just be, we'll be rerating all night, okay? And so I would say, really be picky about the ones that you select must include. Really pick the three, two, three that are, that are critical, that need to be there. And then the other ones, maybe you would give a may include or, or something like that, okay? Now, in the end, what we'll do then with that, just so everyone's clear on the process, is, again, individual board members will fill those out. Those will be then, and they'll do that individually, okay? There's a reason for that, by the way. I think it's important to say this. This is unusual, by the way, for the listening public, for a board to engage in this process this way. And it's because we want the best ideas, the consensus of the board to emerge to the top, all right? We don't want it to be overly influenced, right, by each other even, right? We want you to select. You know your constituents. You know what the community wants. We want you to pick it. Those individually then will be done, and then they'll be handed in. I think, JJ, you'll collect them. They'll come to, to this desk. Now, this is, these are public record, of course. They'll come to the desk. I will crunch the numbers and get the averages from all the ratings of the trustees. And we have, by the way, JJ has a process to get Trustee Nicolet's ratings as well, okay? Hopefully, that's still going to work. We'll average them up, so that'll take a little time. There'll be a little break while that's happening. And then when we come back, I will report to the board which of these goals achieved above a three rating, and that would be that they achieved above the may include to must include range. So just those, and we'll see how many we have, okay? Again, with our target, and, and six to seven, because we've, we've added that standard. So if we reach that on our rating process, then we're done. We have it. Let's say that once we do our number crunching, that we end up with eight or nine or 10 highly rated goals for next year's evaluation. We will then need to do a second round of ratings, potentially. And we'll get to that step if it's needed, and we'll discuss the process if that's needed, okay? Sound good?
Sounds good. All right, so I'm going to jump in. We all have two versions of the same form. Take one, just put it to the side, okay? And then, oh, no, I'm sorry, two copies of the same. Oh, okay, you will shortly have two copies. All right, so don't worry about that, because I was going to say, take the second one and put it to the side. And so I'm going to invite our Deputy Legal Counsel to just have a reminder about how this document will be used and the importances of it.
Hi, everyone. Deputy Chief, General Counsel Sarah Montalvo. So on, on that rating scale, everyone needs to put their name at the top of the document, because all of this is going to be public record, because all of your, what you have circled and, and that you, it's basically a ranking system, which needs to be put into the supplemental materials. So everyone needs to know what trustees voted for what. For, you will be obviously circling, as Dr. Alsberry has noted, based on that ranking system. I believe after Joe is going to present what he believes are his priorities.
Yes, that's right.
Right on the highlights. So before you do that.
That's right. I'm sorry. That's right.
Superintendent Ernst is going to present, based on what he has highlighted, what he thinks are probably his more, his priorities, and why he believes that they are his priorities, to assist you in your ranking system. And then after that, you are going to tally the votes, and I believe you're going to include, I, I think we should probably read for the public, each of the board members, probably top, what are you going to do top, anything that was above a three. Is that correct?
That's, that was what I planned.
Okay, and you, you will identify the board members on the record.
We can do that.
Yeah, yeah. That's best for the, for the meeting purposes. And then I believe Trustee Nicolette is going to be sending you a picture of hers, and then that will also be included in the ranking, and you will be reading hers as well.
That's right.
Yes. I will also add that when the last trustee is done with the ranking, at that point, I will call a recess while all of this happens in the meantime, but I won't call that recess until the last form is completed and turned in.
And thank, thank you to the counsel. I totally forgot. I apologize. Of course, as I mentioned, I, we want Superintendent Ernst, as part of the process, important process, to speak to any, as much as you want, or any, that you want, why these goals? That you, you said, these are the, these are the ones to choose from.
Madam Chair, if I may, I have a question. So what exactly is the second copy for?
When, when we come back from the break, we'll get a second copy so that we can follow along and write what the averages were, so that we can see them, and then also know what the averages were. Otherwise, we would have to write the entire goal and write the number, and so we'll have it as a visual aid and write what the averages are so that we're like, oh, these are the ones. That's what the second document's for. Now, in moving forward, if we need to do additional rounds, we'll handle that separately, okay?
Yeah, and just, just to crystallize, if this, with the exception of the first one, this is the strategic plan and targets, and so it doesn't mean that whatever we select isn't going to be still focused on and performed. This is what we're ranking in terms of the evaluation for the superintendent, right? Okay.
That is exactly correct and a great point. Superintendent Ernst, the entire team works on all areas of the strategic plan. This provides a special focus based on his expertise and what we've narrowed it down to.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Alsberry, for the opportunity to explain each of the targets that you have in front of you. I don't know if there's any value in pulling them up for others to see. If not, it's no problem. I know you all have a visual in front of you. Target number one talks about the superintendent supports and practices balanced governance. You've mentioned this, and participates in individual and team trainings. Have had the opportunity to do that on a couple of occasions. And then, along with professional development in other areas of professional or personal interest. So we've talked about that being identified, and I think, I think what's gratifying to hear is, you know, the kudos for us being able to implement balanced governance and being able to see where it led us today. And so I think there's a lot to be proud of in terms of those steps forward around balanced governance with a new board and a new superintendent. So I was just glad to, to hear that. Target two, implement and align P3 strategy. This is, again, a continuation of the previous goal, and so we talked about some of the progress that has been made, and we kept all of the goals that we talked about today on the previous presentation, because there's still work to do, and we want to continue to make traction. In this area in particular, you have the adoption of a new math series, and you're really looking at strengthening our math pathway with our PK to five area. You can see letters training will continue. We're continuing to make strides in that, but that's really the second part, trying to really step forward on the math side of things. A detailed plan to expand early childhood education and increase partnerships with community childcare providers. There's been some wonderful work in this area already this year. I think, again, this comes from an intuitive stance as an educator, that early childhood education is one of the most critical things that we do as educators and the more substantive ground we can make early. We know that when we look at our own data, when we see that our kindergarten students have had some form of formalized school PK experience prior to starting kindergarten, we see substantive differences in the actual achievement that's occurring. And so we continue to do that. We continue to try to align that with maybe some larger legislative platforms around early childhood, so that's where that comes from. Student voice and activities. You saw the co-curricular and extracurricular. Again, we're going to continue to work on that, and we're going to continue to work on chronic absenteeism. And I suspect chronic absenteeism is going to be something we're going to be working on for the next five years. It is very substantial. You then look at student advisory councils. Again, we've made really tremendous progress with having a leadership council. We continue to look at elementary schools and, and the value there. Going down to safety and belonging, target two. This has come up in a number of different settings around high-quality implementation of facilities management plan for our families and our community, optimizing resources, input from stakeholders. I think that's been even mentioned in some of the discussions today, and providing respectful and timely communication to families. And certainly, after Mrs. Zimmerman presented and some of the feedback, this is something that we're very committed to, to making sure that this transformative work that is significant in the entirety of our community is done in partnership with our families and with our staff. So that's why that goal was selected. If you continue going down, target seven, it's expanding opportunities. I talked to you a little bit earlier about the visitor management system and better tracking of who is volunteering. We're looking still at a number of ways to increase volunteers in our classroom, so that's why that is on there. You see target nine. That was, again, a target that we talked about as one of the identified goals for the 25, 24, 25 school year. And so you can see that, again, is still on here. We reported some of the progress that's been made. You can see, I think, at the heart of the work that we do as educators is accelerating growth and proficiency in academic achievement through high-quality standards-aligned instruction. We're adopting new textbooks. I think this goes very well alongside that, and so it seems to stand to reason that this is one of the goals that we consider as well. Timely support around individual growth for teachers. We continue to work to, to refine, how can we provide good, focused support for every teacher, for staffs collectively, for departments? And so that's what's there on target six. Target eight, again, we've talked about it in the board work session. We talked about it in various presentations, and that's around strengthening recruitment, retention, and advanced pathways. Dr. Alsberry talked about the opportunity for us to align those efforts now going into next year, the 25-26, so that's why that is indicated there. You see the CTE and the dual credit. Again, thanks for the nice comments around the dual credit. I think it's still really good territory for us. Community-based organizations. We've really making some nice steps forward with internships in our school district. I think that this is, you know, when you look at job force, workforce development, internships are critical, and this is a new frontier, I think, that we haven't, education that we maybe haven't had before. We also have a willingness from our community to really lean into these efforts. And then the last one is using data to really inform strategic decision-making. And I think one of the important things that we're working to round out collectively is not isolating data in ways that make it perhaps counterproductive to the whole of a data set. And so I think as we are looking at data, it's really our ability to look at the whole of data in meaningful ways so as to not maybe course-correct overly in one direction or another based on one data point, but on the whole of the data. So we're, we're kind of operating from that space. So those are some of the reasons that these targets have been identified. I certainly welcome all of your feedback and welcome any questions that you may have.
Just, just one question. Can you clarify the launch kindergarten jumpstart district-wide?
So target four.
Yes.
The non-highlighted section, correct, Trustee Mayberry? Yeah, this was an initiative that, that was considered under a previous superintendent. What we have really worked on is getting stronger in transitional programs. And so I think perhaps a better way to look at it, as opposed to the more standardized jumpstart around a formalized experience of one week prior to a school year, what we're looking at is stronger transitions from our early childhood programs, PK up into kindergarten and incoming into kindergarteners, and making really strong transitional plans. So you may want to kind of consider that as opposed to a jumpstart. I think you're probably considering it in transitional space might be a better way to think about that. I appreciate that clarifying question.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so on that note, we can go ahead. Thank you so much. All right. And then, JJ, do you want us to pass these into you when we're done? Okay, and then I'll keep an eye out for whoever the last trustee is, and that will also include Trustee Nicolette. every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question. So I'm going to ask, we're, we're not just ranking the, the yellow ones, we're ranking every single one of them, correct?
Yes, go ahead and rank all of them.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alsberry, I have a question.
All right, JJ, I'm gonna check on Dr Nicolette and just a heads up that we're gonna open with public comment, okay JJ? Okay. All right, all right, we've got Dr Nicolette here. We've got everybody. Okay, team. It is 5:32 PM on this Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, and I'd like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. We are in item 3.05. And before we move on any further, before the board learns any results for what comes next, JJ, let's go ahead and open up public comment.
I have no cards for this item.
Okay, all right, so now if you're like me, you have JJ passed out a second identical version of the form that we just had. This is, we're not using this at this time for any rankings. This is just to allow us to mark down the averages so that we have a visual confirmation of the averages along with each of these goals which may inform our next steps. All right, I will turn it over to you, Dr Ellsbury and JJ.
Okay, so we have some clear front runners. The first one would be "Strong Start for Every Child." That category, target number two, has a 3.86. This is, I'm just gonna read the ones that were above 3.0. So 3.86, "Strong Start for Every Child," target number two.
Just so that we're make, we just make sure that we are procedurally, I know I go through with what the top are, but then you're gonna go back and read them, which trustees ranked their high scores, correct?
We can do that, yes.
Yes, please.
And I'm gonna do this a little strangely, but I think it'll help you in your next step. So then turn to the second page. And this is the top of the page. This is "Safety and Belonging," the category, it's target number nine, improved student safety. That target, 3.86. Then go down to the next category, Academic Growth and Achievement. Target number eight, the Strengthen Recruitment Retention, that one of WCSD staff, 3.86. Then down to Safe and Welcoming Schools, target number one, increased participation, 3.43. Now those were the top four. There's a clear top four, okay? Now we have a whole bunch of ties that are still over 3.0. So you can see how this plays. It's 3.0 would be may include, 4.0 would be must include. So I'm gonna give you the rest of them. So go back to the first page, under Student, Voice, and Advocacy. Target number one, expand access to both, is at 3.29. Under the category Safety and Belonging, target two is 3.29. Then go to the next page, under Academic Growth and Achievement. Target number two is 3.29. To the bottom of the page, Safe and Welcoming Schools, target number three is 3.29. And Safe and Welcoming Schools, target number five, 3.29. And then there's just one. And then there's just one final selection that was over the 3.0. That would be Academic Growth and Achievement. Target number four, Students Will Learn, at 3.14.
Can you, can you repeat that last one?
Uh huh. Academic Growth and Achievement, target number four, 3.14.
So can you go through, um, on the advice of council, can you go through and read? Um, do you just want the fours for each trustee? I mean, I mean, there's, um, I mean, we have the forms, you know, as public record, but...
So how many were above three? Or average three?
Average above three, so it's all the ones I just gave you.
And how many were those?
10.
Okay. If you're gonna consider that all of those, um, as to narrow down to the six or seven, then we should probably have you read all the trustee score for those 10.
Um, and how does the first one that doesn't fall under a pillar or a beam fit?
The very first one rated at 2.86.
Very good. Um, so, I mean, I would say we would do this any way you want us to.
So I think just for open meeting law purposes, since they're going to be considering all of those that are above the three, um, average three for, to finalize, to narrow down to, uh, the six or seven. Each one you should, uh, you should announce what, um, every single board member's, uh, scoring of that topic was. So for example, uh, the first one that had the highest ranking, you would say trustee Smith did a three, you know, like that. And that way, all of the board members then now know what the rankings were of their fellow board members, um, and then can discuss then how to narrow it down.
Okay, JJ, there you go.
So Strong Start for Every Child, target two, trustee Hall, four. Student Voice and Advocacy, target one, trustee Hall, four. Safety and Belonging, target two, trustee Hall, four. Safety and Belonging, target nine, trustee Hall, three. Academic Growth and Achievement, target two, trustee Hall, two. Academic Growth and Achievement, target four, trustee Hall, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target eight, trustee Hall, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target one, trustee Hall, three. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target three, trustee Hall, three. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target five, trustee Hall, three. Strong Start for Every Child, target two, trustee Mayberry, three. Student Voice and Advocacy, target one, trustee Mayberry, three. Safety and Belonging, target two, trustee Mayberry, four. Safety and Belonging, target nine, trustee Mayberry, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target two, trustee Mayberry, three. Academic Growth and Achievement, target four, trustee Mayberry, three. Academic Growth and Achievement, target eight, trustee Mayberry, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target one, trustee Mayberry, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target three, trustee Mayberry, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target five, trustee Mayberry, three. Strong Start for Every Child, target two, trustee Nicolette, four. Student Voice and Advocacy, target one, trustee Nicolette, three. Safety and Belonging, target two, trustee Nicolette, three. Safety and Belonging, target nine, trustee Nicolette, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target two, trustee Nicolette, three. Academic Growth and Achievement, target four, trustee Nicolette, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target eight, trustee Nicolette, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target one, trustee Nicolette, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target three, trustee Nicolette, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target five, trustee Nicolette, three. Strong Start for Every Child, target two, trustee Phoenix, four. Student Voice and Advocacy, target one, trustee Phoenix, three. Safety and Belonging, target two, trustee Phoenix, four. Safety and Belonging, target nine, trustee Phoenix, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, trustee Phoenix, or target two, trustee Phoenix, three. Academic Growth and Achievement, tra, target four, trustee Phoenix, three. Academic Growth and Achievement, target eight, trustee Phoenix, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target one, trustee Phoenix, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target three, trustee Phoenix, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target five, trustee Phoenix, three. Strong Start for Every Child, target two, president Smith, four. Student Voice and Advocacy, target one, president Smith, three. Safety and Belonging, target two, president Smith, three. Safety and Belonging, target nine, president Smith, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target two, president Smith, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target four, president Smith, three. Academic Growth and Achievement, target eight, president Smith, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target one, president Smith, three. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target three, president Smith, two. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target five, president Smith, four. Strong Start for Every Child, target two, trustee Westlake, four. Student Voice and Advocacy, target one, trustee Westlake, four. Safety and Belonging, target two, trustee Westlake, three. Safety and Belonging, target nine, trustee Westlake, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target two, trustee Westlake, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target four, trustee Westlake, three. Academic Growth and Achievement, target eight, trustee Westlake, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target one, trustee Westlake, three. Safe and Schools, target three, trustee Westlake, four. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target five, trustee Westlake, three. Strong Start for Every Child, target two, trustee Woodley, four. Student Voice and Advocacy, target one, trustee Woodley, three. Safety and Belonging, target two, trustee Woodley, two. Safety and Belonging, target nine, trustee Woodley, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target two, trustee Westlake, or trustee Woodley, four. Academic Growth and Achievement, target four, trustee Woodley, two. Academic Growth and Achievement, target eight, trustee Woodley, three. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target one, trustee Woodley, three. Safe and Welcoming Schools, target three, trustee Woodley, two. Safe and Welcoming Schools, trustee Woodley, target five, four.
All right, team, so, um, we've, we've been in situations before where we have some clear, um, selections that rise to the top and then we have additional conversation for additional ones. So just to confirm, the three that were all tied with the 3.86, that was under Strong Start for Every Child, target two. And target, and under Safety and Belonging, target nine. And then the third was Academic Growth and Achievement, target eight. Those are the only three that are all tied with 3.86, okay?
Yes.
So we can do this a couple of different ways. Um, there seems to be universal agreement on those, so what we've done, excuse me, in the past is, uh, we've made a motion to take the top ones and clear those off the board, vote to move those forward and, and install them as those selections. Then we would have a second level conversation around the remainders and then possibly do a second round of ranking for those, but, but take those top three. So by no means do we have to do this, um, it is what we've done in the past. We've done this before when we've had, um, multiple different options to discuss. Um, Dr. Nicolette?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good, wonderful, okay, I'll go quickly. Um, could you please repeat the three that you identified as 3.86? Thank you.
Most certainly. Those are under the category of Strong Start for Every Child, it is target two. That's the implementation of the Align P3 strategy. Under the category of Safety and Belonging, it is target nine, which is the Improved Student Safety. And then in the category of Academic Growth and Achievement, it is target eight, which is the Strengthen Recruitment Retention and Advancement Pathways.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so team, we can do this any way we want, um, but, you know, I would make the recommendation that we, we adopt these three and then have a second level conversation about other ones, or we could certainly do it any way we, we want to.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, Madam President, I was, I thought that I heard Safe and Welcoming Schools, target one, as a fourth one, that was, was pretty high on the list.
Yeah, 3.43.
It would be, four of them were, were clear winners.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree, if we go down to that next level, that was the next one that completely stands apart for, from the remainder. So I personally fully support there being that four. Um, and I, um, I would very much support if there was a motion on these four.
I, I wanted to ask or make a recommendation or see if we could do it. Throw the 3.14 out and then just slug it out for the one, two, three, then there'd be five 3.29s. Cut the lowest one off, move the next highest one forward, and then we just have five 3.29s.
And we can definitely do that, so what I would say is procedurally, let's see if there's a motion out there to take some of these and then we know what we're working with before we make decisions on how we're gonna narrow them down. Let's see how many slots we have left. Clerk Woodley?
I'm ready to make a motion, Madam President, if I may. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the top four identified, um, what are we calling them, goals, thank you. Yeah, I second that, yeah.
Okay, for friendly, do we need to specify what those are, or do you feel this is well enough documented?
I think it's well enough documented since we asked for clarification several times, as long as our recorder is good with knowing what the top four are.
I know what the top four are and I can add them to the final motion.
That works for me. All right, so we have a motion by clerk Woodley, we have a second by Vice President Mayberry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? All right, motion carries, seven to zero. Um, okay, now we have to, um, decide amongst ourselves, there's, you know, a couple of different ways we could do it. We could have discussion which our deputy, uh, legal chief will advise us on, or we could do another ranking just among those next levels. So just as an, an important reminder, Dr. Ellsbury, I'd like to get your voice in here too. Four targets that have performance, it's different than when you had said, like, we could have up to so many, so we have to be very specific with the number of performance-based targets that we have, correct? And now we have four.
Yeah, that's right, it, it's a recommendation, my recommendation has always been five or six and that, and you had, you had six last year. Uh, it's really though, there's no magic number, but that's in the range. So the board can do what it wishes, I mean, I don't wanna get crazy, but you, you could say four and we're good, but you could also go about selecting several others. Yeah, but I would say five or six of the, of the specific targeted items from the strategic goal is what we've always said is, yeah.
Because we have five that are all equally weighted at 3.29, um, so would your recommendation for us to do a second selected round among those solely? And then see where we land on that?
It would be, I, I just personally, I don't have any say in this, so let's be clear, but I liked, um, trustee Westlake's idea to not, you know, take out the 3.14, that's clearly lower. We have five tied and out of that you need to get one or two out of that five and just do a rerating, um, just those five is what I would recommend.
Okay. Um, trustee Hall?
Um, I just wanna offer some, some thoughts, so I was sharing this with trustee Westlake earlier. When I was going through my student teaching, my supervisor reminded us that we cannot measure understanding and so never to write a student objective that says, "Students will understand," because it's not measurable. And so I just wanna throw out that while the FMP matters so much to me, that, that one really, like, we're having this conversation, I actually would like to recommend that maybe we take that off the table because I don't really think it's a measurable goal for a person to, to be in their evaluation. Um, that's something that as a district we wanna strive for, but we're talking about a person's evaluation and that's not really a measurable item. And so I, I think, I, I would like to recommend that while, yes, um, Safety and Belonging, target two, was high on our list, obviously it's important for us, it's not entirely, it's not as easy to measure for the superintendent and so I, I would, I would just like to throw out that I suggest we, we take that one off the table.
Um, clerk Woodley, did you have your lead on two?
No, no.
No? Well, and so we can, so we don't actually have to do another round. So when we were in this same situation a couple of years ago, we didn't actually do a second round. We talked, we talked amongst ourselves and then, um, identified a, a gap that we felt would have, that had not already been selected by the other goals and then that's how we fell onto the other one. So, you know, as we look at this, we have one that we've adopted for Strong Start for Every Child. Um, I don't believe we've adopted one for Student Voice and Advocacy, and by the way, we don't need one in every category, okay? We're just doing an inventory. Um, under Safety and Belonging, we did, um, move forward, target nine. Under Academic Growth and Achievement, we did move forward, target eight. And then under Safe and Welcoming Schools, we did Advance, target one. Um, so just as we all talk, uh, I would just point out that the only one where we didn't, um, already move one on is under Student Voice and Advocacy, and that's, that's not because I'm weighing in one way or the other, I'm just identifying where we had, you know, as we try to balance the other ones.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, now that I, um, think about it, listening to both trustee Westlake and trustee Hall, um, I too agree with removing the bottom, the lowest, and then with the FMP... with removing the bottom, the lowest, and then with the FMP, we do have a 15-year plan in place already. So I think we can just look at going from six to four and just focusing on the other four 3.29s. So if we did remove target number two on the safety and belonging, and target number four on the academic growth and achievement, that would leave us with only four to consider. If I were to recommend, I would say just select one out of the four. Thank you.
Thank you. I, the target two, accelerate student growth and proficiency by ensuring equitable access to high-quality standards, align core instruction for every student. I mean, isn't that a given? We, we have curriculum that we've passed that every student's supposed to have access to. So, I mean, if everyone's getting the same curriculum, I mean, isn't that kind of an oxymoron or redundant? I mean, am I seeing that right? I mean, every student is supposed to have access to the new math that we, we've, are going to be implementing, and the new English, English language arts. So, and every teacher knows that they have to meet these standards, so this just seems like an oxymoron to me. I mean, it seems like we, we gotta do it. I mean, this is the curriculum, these are the standards, go.
Yeah, I, Madam President, your, your thought process was, was very similar to mine. And the student voice and advocacy, if we were to pick, just a thought, if we were to pick one of those four, and I'd be curious, what rated the highest of those four? Maybe that could be the, the fifth goal.
If I, if I have the notes correct, the highest of student voice and advocacy was target one at 3.29. It was one of the ones that have, that tied.
So I, I'm, I'm, just put on the table, I'm willing to make that, you know, propose that to be the, the fifth and final goal.
You would have me on that, because I, I do like the idea, you don't have to have a goal in every single category, but I do like there being some representation, so my logic is, is following yours. But it's all who makes a motion, and then we see where it lands.
Well, I'll throw it out, your voice.
Well, I just want to say, we've already seen what getting kids involved in clubs and activities, it, and we're trying to battle absenteeism. I mean, we've absolutely got to do everything, throw everything, including the kitchen sink, at battling absenteeism. And so I, I think that's kind of very important for us to have that stated.
Okay.
That's a second.
Well, well, let's, let's do a motion, and then we'll do a second, and we'll see where we land. Let's throw some spaghetti against the wall and see what happens.
Could I go ahead and, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to include the fifth goal, the fifth target for superintendent's evaluation as target one under student voice and advocacy.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, we have a second by trustee Westlake to advance student voice and advocacy target one as the fifth goal. I see no discussion on the motion. I'm specifically looking at Dr. Nicolet, I do not see a hand up. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. So now we have five, and if we think we are done, we will need a blanket motion, just like earlier today when we make sub-motions, to wrap it all up in a bow. So there's still one more out there, if someone wants to grab it.
I can do that.
Oh, I have one thing.
Oh, okay.
One more thing. I just, I know that's five, but I think we've, when I was looking at it, as things are being read, I mean, there were areas, superintendents out there, like, yes, on, I'm just saying, I think increasing internships and out-of-school time learning opportunities for kids, that's another huge leg up for our kids, just the same as dual credit, getting them that work experience out there, that is, and students knowing that they have those opportunities to go out and see, you know, if they're really, what they think their passions are, and what they think they want to do, is really what they want to do. It's, I think it's giving our kids a leg up. So I'm just going with the nods out there, and then, just saying, five, six.
I, I just, I want to push back just a little bit on that. That very much will depend on a lot of outside factors, and again, we're talking about a person's evaluation and their contract, and I think, I think the fact that that one in particular involves a lot of outside factors, while I absolutely believe that our, our leadership is going to do that, that depends on a student interviewing and a, an outside company agreeing to bring them on, and, and I, I don't know that that's a fair piece of evaluation. That's, that's just entirely my opinion, and so I, I would not support bringing that one on.
Okay, we have a lot of lights on. I, I also personally like the idea of keeping it simple with the five, that's, that's my thought. Trustee Westlake, and then Vice President Mayberry.
So I, I get that, and, and I can agree to that, but what would be on the superintendent's plate and his team is to expand district partnerships with local businesses and community-based organizations. Then to increase intern, internships, you know, 150 internships, you're right, that's, that's very dependent upon how a student advocates for themselves, apply, how they, you know, getting through the interview, but they still have to have those opportunities. They, they, those opportunities still have to be there. And you know what? It's, it's a good opportunity for them to even go and interview, even if they don't get it.
Right.
It's a great opportunity for them to build their self-confidence, and to advocate their voice and pursue these things. So I, I get the part, but he very well could be judged on, we want our kids to have those opportunities, to have internship opportunities. So.
And, and I, and I agree, I do. I just, I, I think that the, the target one has some components of that, and also, as was already mentioned, that, just because this is a part of the, the actual evaluation doesn't mean that these aren't items that the district leadership is working on. So I know we will absolutely get updates on this, I just, I don't really feel comfortable evaluating somebody on it.
No, I, I'll just be real quick, yeah, I just wanted to keep in perspective, yeah, that's what this is, an evaluation. I mean, internship, that was, that was four for me as well, but I, I'm very comfortable with five, and I, I think we can't lose sight that all of these items, as trustee Hall just pointed out, are going to be important priorities by district leadership. That's, we can't lose sight of that. This is, we're talking about an evaluation, yeah, I agree with you, I don't know how you can measure that. I think, I think we're in good shape.
Then I would say let's throw out a motion to wrap this up with a bow.
I can do that. Okay, I move that the Board of Trustees approves the goals and objectives for the 2025-26 school year performance evaluation for the Washoe County School District Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Hall, we have a second by Vice President Mayberry. For discussion on the motion, I want to say, this was awesome. If this is not the purest intent of the open meeting law, I don't know what is. And I am super pleased to see where we landed with this, with the preparation beforehand, with all the conversations, with the training. I love the way that this all came together. We shared our ideas, and I am super, super proud of everybody involved in this process as well, superintendent Ernst, Dr. Alsbury, and of course, making sure that we all stay in accordance to, to law while we do it. So thank you all so much. I think that this was, this was a great experience as we all continue to learn. All right, and so on that note, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Is, is that an aye, or that's an i? I, okay. Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. That was fantastic. I love it. I love when we work together like this, like, this is so valuable. Okay, wonderful. That closes section three in its entirety, and now we move on to section four, starting with item 4.01, Student Representatives Report. Annie?
Thank you. I am very, very pleased to announce that me and a colleague of mine from the National Association of School, Student Board Members, have been working on creating NAST, which is Nevada Association of Student Trustees. And so as one of the few established student trustees on a public school board of trustees, I've kind of been able to pioneer with Michael Keys, who is the Board of Education Student Trustee. We've been working on creating a website, and then he's working on getting a bill passed for all boards in Nevada to have a student trustee. And so we've been working on creating an association that allows student trustees to have less turnover time, I guess you could say, so shortening the amount of learning period that there is, because for me, I feel like the first six months I was understanding the position, and then now I'm starting to be able to get my voice out there, but we want to shorten that period to maybe three months, or however long it might take, and have a Nevada special association for these student board members. And then my role in this is to recruit students to join those boards, so I've called all 17 districts, and seen about getting a student trustee, or if they have one, and kind of working out, like, let's not have it superintendent-appointed, and let's have a student voice council backing them up, and so working on things like that. We're going to have a meeting in February, I think, with those students that have taken part of it, but we have a website, and it's nvstudenttrustees.org, and, yeah, there's just going to be more information on that, and so we have the legislative press release, all the stuff, it's on that website, so that has been really great, and we've been working pretty hard on that, especially Michael, he's been really great with helping all the logistics, and so we're working on that, and hoping that by the end of this year, probably, I'm aiming for 75% of boards to have a student, or at least working on it, because ideally by the 26, 27 year, it'll be required. So we want to start now, and get them equipped and ready, so they don't have to do it when it's required, they can start now.
Thank you so much, Annie. All right, that closes item 4.01, and now takes us to item 4.02, Board Reports. Dr. Nicolet, I'm going to have you go first, that way we make sure that we, that we get you.
Well, I'm going to do something out of character, and I'm going to pass it on, because I don't want you to have to go through that breakup, it's very painful, so, thank you, and I'm going to exit now and go put on my pajamas. Good evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Nicolet, thank you for being with us. All right, so, let's see, we have, we have some new people and new seats. Let's go to trustee Phoenix.
All right, good afternoon, I don't know what it is now, here we go. So I didn't have too much this last couple of weeks, I, I attended the, the Board Governance Solutions Model with, with Mr. Alsbury here, so I thank him for doing that. Also, I attended the mural reveal event at Reed High School in honor of Renelda James, Ralph Burns, and Thea Dick, who have kept Paiute language alive. So it was an honor and celebration of these three great elders, that, and also with the Washoe County School District. So it's very, it's, it's awesome, basically, to continue to keep our language alive and have it here in, in the school district. So I know a lot of the tribes are very thankful that we have that. Also, I met with Font Hunter, Title VI, just kind of get a brief overview of how the programs are going, so. And then last but not least, I just had my orientation to kind of get my feet wet with, with all the executive staff. So, you know, all the hard work that goes into what they were, what they're, what they're doing, but also some of the shortcomings that they're looking at, and they were to have some solutions moving forward, so I was happy to hear that from them, so, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I've, I had some, I've had a lot of personal, not personal, professional duties that have taken me away. I haven't had a chance to visit any of the schools last couple of weeks, I'll be doing that here shortly. I do want to congratulate Caitlin Lancaster, she was awarded the Impacte Award from the University of Nevada Reno. I understand earlier on Monday, I didn't have a chance to attend that, she's a teacher at Esther Bennett Elementary School, that's in fantastic District F and District B as well, so I want to congratulate her. I wanted to just point out that I think there was a bus, one of our school buses was involved in an accident today, and, and I've, it seems like there's been a few of those over the last couple of weeks. So I just want to remind everybody to drive carefully out there, particularly around our schools and around our walk zones and bus stops. We, somebody who's in the public safety sector, we had a fire engine on, that was, vehicles slammed into at high speeds because they were going too fast under some of these snowy and icy conditions, so slow down out there, folks, put your phones down, and keep an eye out for each other. Finally, Commissioner Marylouz Garcia of Washoe County, along with former trustee Joe Rodriguez, who's now in the Spark City Council, made the BLT aware at the last minute, I don't think, I don't think we got a notice of this, but they had a forum, an immigration forum in Sun Valley at St. Peter's Church. I, I think the other two members of the BLT were unable to attend, so, you know, the, the white guy, the non-Spanish-speaking representative showed up. I'm thinking, oh, you know, immigration forum, it'll be a couple dozen people. This is just a picture, I'm, I'm not kidding, there were about 1,000 people packed into this church, that was a picture taken early in the process. I had a chance to represent this board. A lot of questions about, you know, the, some of the, the narratives on ICE and coming into school, and I made sure that this audience, you know, realized that we are committed to teaching all of our students regardless of, and welcoming all of our students regardless of immigration status, and many of the, of the families were very appreciative of that. But for me, it was a real inspiring moment. It really drove the point home to me that, you know, there is great fear out there, particularly in our Hispanic community, with this, this notion of deportations. And so I wanted to share this picture, so I appreciate the chance to go and represent the district as, as Vice President of Board. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to acknowledge and recognize a Reno Police Officer Detective Mike Guiter, who today's his last day at work, and I went to his retirement party, and he was one of our first community action officers. He also worked in family crimes and sex crimes, he did a lot of work with the school district, so much so that his wife was a teacher at the school district, and they're both getting ready for retirement, and they're leaving to go move to the East Coast, so congratulations to the Guiders. I also want to give a shout out to economics teacher Joey Gibbs at Galena. I understand he invited a friend of mine, Mike Richardson, with Gold Star Mortgage, to give his students real-life information and practices with regards to economics, so we like seeing that when they bring someone in, that the kids can relate to how it applies in real life. I did have the opportunity, the honor to visit TMCC High School, which by the way, we still have open enrollment until February 28th. I met with Ms. Renos Christina, I also visited with McQueen High School, Mr. Schreiber. Principal Holbrook was busy hosting professional development for all our principals. I also visited middle school Billingshurst with Mr. Arnold. He told me how they were able to raise funds for their tutoring and after-school programs. They lost some ESF funding, so they lost 25,000, but they were able to do a fundraiser, and they raised 27,000, so they were able to do that, so congratulations to them. I also had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Fezzi over at Coral Academy. They treated me like I was a dignitary, I felt special, I appreciate it, they're doing great work over there, they are a five-star school, they are sponsored by us, so we appreciate them. I also met with Mr. Smith at Duncan Elementary. He has an award that he gives Dolphin of the Day to his students, and last week he actually gave it to an entire third-grade class, after receiving an email from a substitute teacher who informed him that he had been working for 33 years and had never had a class as impressive as that third-grade class, Ms. Brown. So they, the entire Class One Dolphin of the Day. So that was good. I also met with Mr. John Stern at Westergaard Elementary, got to meet some of his employees, some of his staff. There were two that stand out, and I want to give them a shout out. Fernando Neri, he is the custodian, and he takes care of everything in that school, and we appreciate him. And then also Ms. Kelly Haas, she's a second-grade teacher, and she's one of the best teachers we have, so I wanted to acknowledge her. And then lastly, that was it. And then lastly, that was it. That was, I went to that retirement party, thank you.
Thank you. Did my picture come up? Oh, yes. Yay, yay. So, I did start doing school visits, and one of my school, my first school visit was with Principal Denise Paul at Jerry Whitehead, this little elementary school right up the street from me, I just, that school is amazing, they're the whales, they're awesome. This is a computer lab that, God love her, trying to do good things for the kids there, has gotten a computer lab for her elementary school. They used ten thousand dollars of cookie dough sales, which I have my share of that, and then they got a ten thousand dollar check from Van, Van Sickle Foundation grant, it was a twenty thousand dollar investment, and it is gonna be put to great use, but amazing, amazing work. I also visited with Principal Fanon at Dunn Elementary School, they're doing great things, with Principal Rosenbloom at Reed, and then, great visit there, super excited for the modernization, and then with Principal Riordan at Moss Elementary School, and one thing I wanted to highlight there is, she always, they're making great strides there, but the one thing I just wanted to mention is, her student voice leadership group is, they're thirty, currently thirty-three members, and they're working on their own mission and vision statement. She wants the students to develop that, and I think that's wonderful. Annie, I think it's wonderful what you're doing, I mean, keep, keep that up, keep that up. Also attended the UNR Women's Basketball with fellow trustees, and it was so much fun, and I have to say, nothing is cuter than those little wolf mascots, I mean, they are so stinking cute, and now there's three of them. I mean, they've got a little bitty one, it's like, almost like a daddy, a mommy, and a kid, and, and they're just, they're, they're absolutely adorable. Shout out to Officer Killian, completing his training for, to be a middle school officer for O'Brien and Cold Springs. Our school police are doing such great things, I mean, they are just taking off running. Welcome to Officer Lamar, I just think it's wonderful that we are getting these wonderful people on board. And then I just want to give a shout out to little Evan Sanchez, I've never met him, but he was the kid reporter for the Super Bowl, and I just, the one thing, I just think it's adorable, that he said was, "From the French Quarter to the Fourth Quarter, I've got you covered." And I think that's amazing, and that's what I feel like this district is doing. We've got it covered, we've got, we've got it covered, and we're working hard, so congratulations to, to everybody, and see you next board meeting.
All right. So, I took a little different approach today, do you want to, do you want to try it? So, this quote was on the wall of my classroom, in every classroom I ever had, and the reason I had it on my classroom wall is because I believe that every person has a unique voice, has a history and a culture that is important to all of us. And it's important to me that, that we set the tone, I think that the conversations we had today set that tone, and, and so, over the, the last couple of, of weeks and month that I've been a board member, I've had this opportunity to visit these schools and see firsthand how we're, how we're expressing, and allowing kids to bring their voice, and allowing kids to have fun and engage, and, and be a part of it, and, and know that there is not a one-size-fits-all approach to education. Every single one of our children in this school district is unique, every single one of our teachers, and staff members, and leadership members is a unique person, and brings something incredibly valuable to our district. And so, I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate that, because it's just, it's so incredible, and I think we've, we've seen that today, and I've been just seeing that on all my visits, and it's just, it's, it's really, really powerful as an educator to see this. So, I just wanted to share that beautiful quote, and I'm, I've already got my calendar marked for that bocce ball tournament at Paco Lo, that Marcy Hur's students are hosting for the Paco Lo students, so, if anybody's free on March eleventh. But anyway, I just wanted to say that I'm just, I, I'm just so appreciative of, of all the work that everyone's doing here. And since you mentioned TMCC, AACT also has a few openings for tenth and eleventh graders incoming, and, which that's never happened, so, apply for those openings if you can. That's it, I didn't go over three.
Not even close. All right, I'll wait until I get my, I'm not gonna do the picture right away, but I'll just wait until JJ's got it all queued up. All right, we start my timer. All right, so, trustees get something called Superintendent Highlights, I read every single word, I read it more than once, because I take different things from it, of course I do. But in this Superintendent Highlights, I was really excited to see the class, the staff climate survey, higher in every area, and a seventeen percent in participation, particularly glad to see the feeling of safety go up. I know we talked about that earlier in the meeting, but I wanted to bring attention to that, because I really do enjoy the information that's there, and that's one that really jumped out at me, and so I appreciate that very much, and extremely proud of the team, because we are only as strong as, as how our team perceives us to be, that goes to the heart of belonging and retention and all those things, so very, very proud of that for the group. Also wanted to say congratulations to the Super Bowl Kid Reporter Evan from Jesse Beck, our own district, come on, we got the Super Bowl Kid Reporter! I'm telling you, I'm so proud. It was also mentioned, Catlin Lancaster, the Impact Award from UNR, that first grade teacher from Esther Bennett, congratulations to her. I visited Innovations High School in Turning Point as well. I also participated in a PRS meeting as part of the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Governing Board, which I serve on behalf of, related to schools, that was a great meeting. And then, finally, I'll close in, in a moment, my next to last thing, had a meeting with Dylan Schreber from Pinion Public Affairs and Superintendent Ernst about the 2025 legislative session, one of the things that kind of came out was that there's some outdated language in one of our policies, and so as we, and this is all of our responsibility, as we come across things and policies, that maybe this was set at a different time, when things were structured in a different way, and so what we'll be doing is like gathering those items that are slightly outdated, or no longer aligned with how we operate, and we'll be bringing those forward, because we're really responsible for keeping our policies up to date for ourselves. And then finally, we've got this picture here, so, former Washoe County School Board trustee and beloved president, now Senator Dr. Angie Taylor, I was very honored to be there for her swearing-in, incredibly proud of her, and that was a huge moment, because we need all the education champions we can get at the legislature, so incredibly proud of her. And that concludes my board report. I think that's a record for me, too. All right, so that closes item 4.02, and we move on now to 4.03, our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President, I'll, I appreciate all the indulgence, I think I've talked a lot tonight, so, thank you for, for all of that. I'll share one story that warmed my heart just a little bit over the past couple of weeks, in doing a school visit, a school near and dear to my heart, had an opportunity to meet one of our students, and the student had been absent over a hundred times the previous school year, over a hundred times, it's really pretty significant. And the principal made a point, because you've mentioned how hard our, our schools are working to improve attendance, and so I got to meet the young man, and the young man unfortunately has twenty absences, but twenty absences is a lot better than a hundred absences. And what I would say, as we sometimes look at these percentages, we look at these numbers, that the amount of improvement that this young man and their family, and the relationship that they've established with the school has made, has been incredible, and, at the end of the year, he'll be considered chronically absent. And so sometimes, when we think about the numbers and, and everything behind them, I always like to really take it down to that student level, and remember to just kind of keep our sights there. This young man is making great progress, he's gonna keep doing so, and that was one of the heartwarming stories that I had from the past couple of weeks, so, just thought I'd share that.
Wonderful, that's great, and it's such an important reminder to look at things on a case-by-case basis, student by student. That closes item 4.03, and brings us now to Section Five, our closing items, and that brings us to closing public comment, item 5.01. JJ, who are we welcoming up today? Welcome, Ms. Smith.
Oh, I'm not tech savvy. Good evening. Trustee Superintendent and our district leadership, my name is Teresa Smith, I am a teacher in our school district. I started my career here in Washoe County in 2009. This year, I am very excited to be a union rep, I, I, in part of my career, have worked for some of the leadership in this room. I am our student voice council, teacher facilitator, and I'm also very excited to be a mentor teacher. I want to start by recognizing the work that you guys have done to support our students and our staff. Your commitment to improving education in Washoe County is clear, and I appreciate the efforts that we have all made, and that you have all made, to address the challenges that we face in our unique district. As a mentor teacher, I see firsthand the impact of these decisions on our newest educators. There's a statistic that fifty percent of teachers quit within the first five years of teaching. Supporting new teachers through our mentorship is one of the most effective ways that we can improve teacher retention. When teachers feel supported, they have someone to turn to for guidance, advice, and encouragement, they are far more likely to stay. The first year in the classroom can be overwhelming, and having a mentor makes a real difference in whether a teacher feels like they can succeed in this profession, just like we would treat our students. We are also looking to treat our colleagues. That being said, we have many challenges within our current program. One of the biggest is that we don't start working with our mentees until after the school year has already started. By the time we're paired with them, they are already deep in the excitement of starting their school year, the chaos of setting up their classrooms, remembering all of their students' names, learning new curriculum, drowning in their dream Pinterest boards that are guiding their design of their perfect assignments in classroom, managing student behaviors, and navigating our district's systems. Oh, I'm also figuring out what key opens the bathroom. That's important. All of this without the guidance that they need in the critical first few weeks of school. We're playing catch-up from there, and unfortunately, so are they. If we truly want to set our new teachers up for success, mentorship needs to begin before students ever step foot in the classroom, above and beyond our first few days of professional development and meetings with our staff. Another challenge is that, ooh, this goes by fast, this is my first time. Another challenge is that mentorship is only provided for one year, teaching is complex, and growth doesn't stop after year one. The reality is that many teachers still struggle in their second and even third years without continued support. Do I stop?
Yeah, you do, but that was wonderful, and you're right, that, those three minutes go by really, really fast.
I'm cheering for our mentorship program.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Smith, we really appreciate that.
Thank you for having me.
Daryl Crowther.
Welcome, Mr. Crowther, thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school board, my name is Daryl Crowther, and I teach choir and piano at DePoli Middle School. I've been fortunate to be a part of this district since 2017, fostering a love of music for, in our students. Before coming to the Washoe County School District, I taught in Clark County School District, in Las Vegas, in India, and in the United Arab Emirates. While in Clark County, I was privileged to be a part of the Grammy-nominated music program, and have my choir sing with top music artists, including singing to over a billion people at the World Music Awards on ABC Television. I want to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude for your ongoing support of music education. Music is so much more than just notes on a page, it cultivates creativity, discipline, and teamwork, skills that benefit students in all aspects of their lives. I also want to thank Mr. Mayberry, specifically in the leadership team, for taking the time to visit the piano lab at DePoli Middle School. It means a great deal to us to have your support and to see your engagement with our programs. I take great pride in that classroom and being the only school to have such a unique offering for our student body. I teach because I believe in the transformative power of music and education. I've witnessed firsthand how music can ignite a spark in a child, build their confidence, and provide them with a lifelong passion. This passion extends beyond my role as a mentor to new teachers. I'm a mentor because I believe in investing in the future of our profession. Mentoring allows me to share my experience and knowledge with new teachers, helping them navigate the challenges and joys of teaching. It's a mutually beneficial relationship, I learn just as much from my mentees, fresh perspectives, and innovative ideas, as they learn from me. It helps me, it keeps me energized and excited about teaching. Now, while I'm incredibly passionate about my work, and while we have so many positives to celebrate, I also want to be candid about the challenges we face. Teacher burnout is a real concern, and retaining quality teachers is becoming increasingly difficult. The workload, coupled with the emotional demands of the job, can be overwhelming. Add to that real-life scenarios, such as my mentee, who moved to Reno to begin his teaching career this year. On his first night in a new apartment just last weekend, that he recently moved into, he woke up on Monday morning to have his car stolen. We lose so many talented educators in the first few years, and that loss impacts our students and our schools. Teacher retention needs to be a top priority for this board and all of us who care about our community. We need competitive salaries, manageable workloads, and access to professional development, but beyond that, we need to foster a culture of support and appreciation. Mentorship plays a crucial role in teacher retention, providing new teachers with a support system, helping them feel less isolated, and giving them a safe space to ask questions and share concerns. I urge you to make mentorship a permanent budget item, the mentoring program should be recognized as a vital organ to the body of the school district. By investing in our new teachers, we invest in the future and life of our district. Thank you for your time, your dedication.
Thank you so much, Mr. Crowther, we appreciate that, thank you.
The board received an email from Julio Gonzalez.
Thank you. All right, team, that closes item 5.01, thank you so much for our public commenters, and now I will announce that our next meeting is on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, 2025, that's the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, and then at 6:34 PM, we'll call this meeting to adjournment, thank you.